There's a lot of people here. So, good evening and welcome to the March 18th, 2024 Meeting of the City of Pacifica Planning Commission. This meeting is called to order. May I have a roll call?
Commissioner Berman.
Present.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Present.
Commissioner Godwin.
Present.
Chair Hauser.
Present.
Vice Chair Leal.
Present.
Commissioner Wright.
Present.
Commissioner Lauren Berman is participating remotely pursuant to Government Code Section 54953 F2, which allows remote participation for just cause or emergency circumstances. Commissioner Berman, can you confirm for the record the reason for your remote participation?
Yes, I am participating remotely due to a contagious illness, which is a just cause basis for remote participation under Government Code Section 54953 J2B.
Okay. Under AB 2449, Commissioner Berman, you are required to identify whether there are any individuals aged 18 years of age or older who are present in the room at the remote location that you are calling from, and identify the general nature of the relationship that you have with any individuals that are physically present in your location.
There is no individuals over the age of 18 in my room.
Okay, thank you. All votes must be by roll call due to Commissioner Berman's remote participation, so if I forget that, Director Murdock, please remind me. All right. Vice Chair Leal, would you mind leading us in a salute to the flag?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you, Vice Chair Leal. Before we get into administrative business, any member of the public wishing to make public comment on an agenda item should complete a speaker card and bring it to the front and hand it to staff. On the card, please indicate the agenda item on which you wish to comment, or oral communications for items not on the agenda. Members of the public may also participate in the meeting via Zoom. And can we please put the dial-in information on the screen if that doesn't conflict with Commissioner Berman? Okay, great. The phone number, as shown, is 669-900-6833. Once dialed in, enter conference number 811-5615-8241 and press the pound key. Once I have announced the public comment opportunity for the item on which you wish to comment, press star nine to raise your hand if dialing by phone, or the raised hand function in Zoom. City staff will then identify you by your name, or by the last four digits of your phone number, when it is your turn to speak. If dialing in once identified for your turn to speak, press star six to unmute yourself, wait a few seconds, and then begin speaking. Be sure to mute any other broadcasts you may be watching, such as Channel 26 or the live stream. Also, dial-in instructions are shown on screen, and I will call each speaker whether in person or by dial-in for the beginning of their public comment opportunity. And now this part is important. Public meetings are a limited public forum, meaning that there are rules for commenting at these meetings. Comments on non-agendized items must address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission, and comments on agendized items must relate to that specific item. If comments do not fall into one of these categories, the city will provide you with an initial warning to stay within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city, or on topic. If the warning is not followed, I will direct the city clerk to cut off your microphone, and throughout this warning system, I will seek the assistance of the city attorney in identifying comments not related to the agenda item, or not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. And that takes us to administrative business. Do we have any public comment cards for administrative business, or any folks on Zoom? This is for administrative business, which are things like order of agenda and meeting minutes. This is not oral communications yet, and this is not the quarry yet.
We do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay? Okay. Please bear with me, as I have a lot of screens open. So, that takes us to approval of the order of agenda. Before we do this, I'd actually like to ask staff if we could please have an understanding of how many people are on Zoom in the meeting tonight?
We have 27 attendees on Zoom right now.
And it's not oral communications yet, but if folks who wish to make an oral communication could raise their hand, if they are wishing to speak on oral communications and not the public hearing, I'm trying to decide if I think we should keep the order of the agenda, since there are so many people here in the room who wish to speak. So, anybody that wishes to make an oral communications comment in Zoom, please raise your hand or press star nine. Are there any hands raised?
We have one raised hand.
Okay. With that, I think it would be wise, there are two folks here, may I see that? I think it would be wise to keep the agenda the same, so is there a motion to approve the order of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the order of the agenda, as is.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let's take a vote. Director Murdock.
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Chair Hauser.
Yes.
Vice Chair Leal.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Okay. We have no approval of minutes tonight, and no designation of liaison to City Council. Director Murdock, is that still the case?
Yes, Chair, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now that takes us to oral communication. And I will start with Sam Cassius, and I believe this says Ken Miles, but if it does not, Ken M. something is second.
Good evening, planning commissioners. Tonight, I want to ask you about accountability and your own responsibility as a planning commissioner. I am profoundly disappointed that our city leaders have not learned anything from recent legal losses on development projects throughout the city after concerned citizens presented you with well-reasoned legal and scientific data-driven conclusions for poorly planned projects. The Vistamar legal reprimand and its ongoing losses are now over $1 million that everybody in this room is having to pay for, for your mistakes. This commission and the council also approved 1567 Beach Boulevard and 505 San Pedro projects that the Coastal Commission rejected. There was countless city planning hours and legal fees spent on these debacles, and I can only conclude that the commission was taking orders from somewhere else because these were easily avoidable fiascos where all you had to do was look at the data, but you chose to ask about paint schemes and which tree varieties would be used in the landscaping, instead of hard questions on environmental hazards and sensitive habitat areas. So I ask you, what are the lessons learned from these huge losses that we, as taxpayers, have been responsible for? Why is no one being held accountable for the accumulating legal losses that the Pacific taxpayers are incurring because of your approval, your short-sighted approval of these projects? Why are you not apologizing for your lack of thoughtful review for these past projects, when instead, and instead stating your wish to build out, and FEMA to bail us out? The city manager is always whining about his inability to prioritize projects and his staff's time management, yet they have the time to waste on these ongoing legal debacles? What are we paying our city attorney for as they rack up countless hourly fees at our expense? Are you holding them accountable for bad legal advice, or are they taking orders from you? And what decisions will you be making later tonight on projects that will surely be legally challenged if you choose once again to look the other way, but after the legalities are finished or environmental catastrophes occurs, I will be here to hold you accountable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cassius. I would ask, I would ask that people refrain from clapping, or booing, or any sort of... I am happy to take as many breaks in this meeting until we can act respectful to one another. Okay, Ken Miles, and then it's the last speaker card that I have.
If you try to back up on the speaker, I cannot hear a speaker.
I haven't spoken yet. I'm Ken Miles, I live in Valleymar, and I know that the city council's watching this tonight, and it's hard to get to them, and I'm going to say it because there's a lot of people here. We're getting ready to have a fire season again, and they had a chipper program, which went around from the fire department, and they would gather the tree limbs and everything, and they'd mulch them up. It was a great help, but we've got to do that more. We have to have controlled burns, and also the city streets and tree people had created fire breaks around Terranova High School some time ago, and they can do it again. I think we're posed for a disaster like, a possible disaster like Paradise or Lahaina, if we don't take care of this problem now. And I think as a planner, and I used to be on the Planning Commission, you have a responsibility to take care of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. That is the last speaker card that I have, so I'm going to move on to Zoom, and I believe we had one raised hand.
We have one raised hand. Lori C., you may unmute yourself.
Lori, you have three minutes.
Oh, there we go. Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Lori.
Excellent, thank you. So is now the appropriate time to talk about agenda items, just to make sure?
This is oral communications for items not on the agenda, but once we're through with this, we'll move on to Agenda Item One, which is the public hearing.
Okay, I'll wait till then, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, well with that, I will close oral communications. We have no consent items tonight, so that brings us to continue public hearings. Item One on the agenda, File Number 2016-001, rezoning RZ-210-22, Development Plan DP-86-22, Specific Plan SP-179-22, Quarry Use Permit UP-71-16, Variance PV-531-22, Tree Permit TP-122, and Certification and Adoption of a Final Environmental Impact Report. May we please have a staff report?
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, Honorable Commissioners, Planning Director Christian Murdock. As noted in the introduction, we're here tonight to talk about the proposed quarry reclamation plan for the former Rockaway Quarry, located in the Rockaway Beach neighborhood. Reclamation of the former quarry would include, as proposed, an import of 874,000 cubic yards of soil related to grading and drainage improvements on the site, and removal of 25 protected trees, as well as 13 other trees that are not protected by the city's ordinances. The project would also include trail construction, revegetation, and invasive species removal, and wetlands mitigation, in addition to other project components. The project site is comprised of two parcels, parcel on the west, known as the quarry parcel, and the parcel on the east, known as the eastern parcel. The quarry parcel is approximately 47 acres in area, the eastern parcel approximately 39 acres, for a total project site area of approximately 86 acres. And you can see in between the two red shaded parcels, there's an unshaded area generally comprising of Clara Creek and the Clara Creek Multipurpose Trail. That's city-owned property operated and maintained in conjunction with the Clara Creek Water Recycling Plant, shown at the top right of the graphic on the screen. The project site in the city's general plan has two primary land use designations. The eastern parcel is primarily the visitor-serving commercial land use designation, whereas the quarry parcel on the west, or the left side of the screen, has a small area in the central portion, denoted as the pad, also known as the quarry pit, with that same visitor-serving commercial land use designation, and the remainder of the quarry parcel in a conservation land use designation. Quarry reclamation is required by a state law known as the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act, or SMRA, and SMRA is implemented with additional regulations adopted by the Department of Conservation, Division of Mine Reclamation, also known as DMR. The city of Pacifica Municipal Code also requires reclamation to occur following closure of a surface mine in Title IX, Chapter Two of the Pacifica Municipal Code, known as Surface Mining and Reclamation. Every mining operation must have an associated reclamation plan to address safety concerns and environmental concerns, once the mining operation is ceased, and reclamation plans are required to have a financial assurance mechanism, or FAM, as a financial guarantee to ensure reclamation is completed. The proposed quarry reclamation plan has several required approvals that need to be granted by the city in order for it to take effect. The first of these is California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, review, and for this purpose, certification of an environmental impact report, or EIR, would be necessary, along with adoption of a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, or MMRP, which includes various measures that need to be implemented and monitored on the site to manage potential environmental impacts. The other approvals to be granted by the city if the project were to be approved include two legislative items, in other words, changes to the law. One would include a rezoning on the city zoning map to the PD, or Planned Development Zoning District. Importantly, the rezoning that's proposed would not change the Hillside Preservation District, or HPD overlay that's applied to the site. And the second legislative item would be what's known as a development plan, which is a required component of the city's planned development, or PD zoning. It would set forth the allowable uses, essentially creating site-specific zoning of allowable uses and other standards for the quarry site. And then of the more standard permit variety, there are four different types of permits that this project would require. The first is a quarry use permit. As its name suggests, it's a specific approval type related to quarry mining and reclamation operations set forth in the municipal code. There would also be a specific plan approval. This is a permit type, not a broader plan, as provided in state law under the same name. This is the required component of the PD zoning district, whereas the development plan above sets forth the allowable uses, the specific plan lays out specific architectural and site plan characteristics for a development. And then lastly, a variance to deviate from the Hillside Preservation District, or HPD coverage for the site, and a tree permit to authorize removal of protected trees. The project would also require approvals from other agencies, including the California Coastal Commission, the US Army Corps of Engineers, US Fish and Wildlife Service, and San Francisco Bay Regional Water Quality Control Board, with those permit types associated with those agencies shown on the screen. Shifting next to a summary of the proposed reclamation plan. The plan was submitted to the city in 2016, and revised most recently in October of 2023, following a June 2023 Planning Commission public hearing. The project now includes a proposal of 874,000 cubic yards of soil import, reduced from 970,000 cubic yards, and that would change the number of truck trips to 146 from over 160 per day under the prior proposal, and those would be 50% inbound and 50% outbound of the total truck trips each day. And that would be one truck trip approximately every three to four minutes.
I would like to remind everyone to please be respectful. We will go to public comment. Everyone, everyone will have their turn to speak, and I know that we all feel passionately about this. Everyone will have their turn to speak, and everyone will be heard, but we have to be respectful.
The project would also include some other components, including construction of two major trails, and the elimination of informal trails that are located throughout the site, stormwater drainage improvements, including some drains along the proposed slopes, as well as drainage infrastructure at the bottom to catch sediment before discharging it to Clara Creek, and would include, as noted, a Hillside Preservation District coverage variance for grading. And you can see here the various components of the project site as they're described in the project materials. On the eastern parcel, you'll see those green and blue highlighted areas. Those are proposed wetlands mitigation areas, and a proposed California Red Lake Frog mitigation pond to offset wetlands impacts on the quarry parcel. And then you can see the quarry parcel on the left shaded in various colors denoting the key sub-areas, such as the quarry pit, quarry face, hilltop, east flank, and southern bluff, and those areas are described in the various materials to help describe more specifically sub-areas of the large site. And then you can see on the eastern parcel that yellow-orange lime work coming from Highway One at the bottom, coming through up and out from the site at the Reyna del Mar and Highway One intersection. That's the proposed circulation path to bring soil in, to leave it on the site, and for outbound trucks to exit at the intersection. And then you can see here the aforementioned trails that would be proposed, primarily the red and yellow trails. Those are the major new trails, and their approximate alignments, those have changed slightly based on the latest project revision. The Planning Commission, as mentioned earlier, held a previous public hearing on June 5th, 2023. Tonight is the continued public hearing from that night. The Planning Commission continued to a date to be determined to allow staff and the applicant to respond to more than 20 specific items identified for follow-up at that public hearing. Responses based on staff research and applicant info are provided in the staff report. As far as revisions to the project, the applicant submitted the revised plan in response to the Planning Commission's input. I think the main difference from the prior plan is that fill is reduced by approximately 10% to 874,000 cubic yards of import. No outbound truck trips would occur during the school drop-off period in the morning. That is in response to concerns expressed about impacts to traffic during the morning school drop-off hour, and the applicant has agreed to cap daily truck trips at 161 trucks, which is the number that was analyzed in the EIR. The reduction in fill that's proposed would reduce the expected number of truck trips, but the applicant's committed to a cap, so that there's not an unknown upward swing of import, which was one of the concerns expressed at the prior hearing.
Excuse me, we're going to take a five-minute resource. It's 7:28, and we will reconvene at 7:33.
Yeah, and you're fucking me right here.
Yeah, we'll be right here waiting for you.
You can't.
Question we asked last June that didn't seem to get a lot of airplay in tonight's packet, I wanted to put that question back on the top of the list and bear with me because this is kind of a long one. It was Commissioner Berman who first asked the question at our last meeting, but it was also the final question that we asked that night and it was discussed more than any other question at the hearing. How much foreign soil is actually needed to reclaim the quarry? My thought on the analysis that the applicant has brought back before the commission tonight is that it does not fully address the central question because the answer to this question should simply be a number. To provide a little context, and I am getting to a question, but this is going to be a little bit of context here. So to provide a little context, when reviewing the draft EIR, there's a reduced fill alternative, which is specifically noted as meeting all project objectives and resulting in similar or fewer impacts as compared to the proposed project. And this certainly sounds like it's worth looking into and was the source of our question. The draft EIR says, under the reduced fill alternative, the minimum fill required to meet SMARA requirements and slope stability would be used. What wasn't clear to me back in June, however, was just how many cubic yards of foreign soil are required in the reduced fill alternative. Is it 300,000, 500,000, 10,000? We actually do have the answer of how many cubic yards would be required under the reduced fill alternative because it was already studied in the 90s and already analyzed under CEQA in the 90s in its footnote one in the staff report. The answer is zero. It takes, no, 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 no. Please. It takes zero, please, guys. It takes zero cubic yards of imported soil to reclaim the quarry. And I was surprised that this answer, zero, was not specifically provided to us last June because Section 2 of the original Balin Soil Plan entitled "History" talks about the 1990 plan specifically and it says that the reclamation plan involved cutting and filling approximately 807,000 cubic yards of earth material during two phases of work. When I read that last June, I thought that 807,000 cubic yards of foreign soil were needed in the 1998 plan to reclaim the quarry, which seems substantially similar to what's being proposed tonight, but it's not. What isn't explained is that the 807,000 cubic yards in the old plan isn't foreign soil. It's simply native dirt being moved from one part of the quarry to another part of the quarry. Zero cubic yards of soil from foreign sources being brought into the quarry. So this, this was, and, and please, guys, I, I really understand. I really cannot tell you how much I understand. But this was a kind of long wind-up to get to my question. And here it is. I would like to understand why the proposal in front of us tonight is 874,000 cubic yards of unknown dirt being brought in here when what seems to be the answer to our June 4th question is that reclaiming the quarry requires zero cubic yards of foreign soil. And I'm so glad to see the property owner finally pursuing a reclamation. I think we've all been waiting and hoping to see the property owner meet his obligation on this front for quite some time. But in light of all of this and not having the answer we asked for, there's still very important questions on my mind after reading the updated plan and I don't see where the applicant has provided the analysis that we requested. And that makes staff's job hard, but it also makes our job hard as commissioners. So that is my question. It's a, it's a really big one, but I feel like it was the source of almost our entire deliberation nine months ago and I don't see that analysis in the new plan.
Do you want to let them answer or do you want us to ask more questions?
I would like, I mean, either one, if you have more to, to, I would like an answer.
I would like to give them an opportunity to respond before asking a follow-up question.
So if the question is to staff in relation to your question and context, I think the answer is we have reviewed and analyzed the reclamation plan that's been proposed by the applicant. And so as it relates to our obligation to process the application and to analyze it related to the required findings, that is our task and that is what we have done in this case. As to why some other amount of fill, as little as zero fill imported into the site, has not been proposed, that's fundamentally a question for the applicant to answer.
Well, and that, that kind of dovetails, and, and I, I'm going to ask, this is my last one, I'm going to ask every commissioner to kind of select their top two questions because again, we've got a lot of people here that are wishing to speak. But the applicant provided 700 pages of material. We got letters over the weekend and it sounds like you had 100 comments from members of the public. And the primary question that we asked nine months ago didn't seem to be in any of the applica-, you know, in any of the 700 pages. So I think my question is, has staff had enough time to analyze this information? Do we have enough information from the applicant?
Well, I think we've had enough time to analyze the revised project that was proposed in October of 2023 as it relates to environmental impacts and the adequacy of the prior environmental review relative to the revised project. Yes. As far as information that's come in more recently in terms of the various comment letters, we have not had an opportunity to consider those in full. I'll say the review that I've been able to do shows a lot of the same types of comments from the public being expressed again, questions about the appropriateness and desirability of the reclamation plan, for instance. Not much more to necessarily analyze in relation to those. But there was also additional information submitted from the applicant as well. And that is not something that we've had a chance to fully consider relative to some of the specific points they've raised in their comment letters, for, for instance.
Okay. Thank you, Director Murdock, for that explanation. Um, so I think I'll, sure, well, I was just gonna, I was gonna go down the row, so why don't we start with Commissioner Wright? We'll go down the row and we'll end with Commissioner Berman.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you to everyone for being here. Thank you, staff, for your work on this. Thank you, fellow commissioners, for the tremendous amount of time that you spent delving into this material. I too have read the 1998 report, as footnoted. I was intrigued with what I read. I am not at all happy that it wasn't included in its entirety in our packet for our own analysis.
Commissioner Wright, can you speak more directly into your microphone?
That plan addresses so many more of the commission's and the public's questions and it raises trust issues for me, frankly. I want to be clear, I would much rather advocate for a plan substantially more similar to that 1998 plan than I would for the one that's before us right now. I have a huge list of other conditions and considerations for such a similar plan to protect a lot of our concerns. All the concerns that we share, the public shares, I'm sure the applicant shares and staff shares. The 98 plan in large part solves a lot of the traffic issues, the duration issues, the potential contamination issues, and so much more. I would wonder if staff wouldn't benefit from more time to more closely analyze some of this to come up with a better resolution, but we can see how that, that plays out. Let's see. That plan has many less trips and only from April to October and only over two years. There's, I could go on and on, but I know that we have a lot of people that want to have their voice heard, so I want to allow that to go on.
Is, is the question, does staff need more time to analyze the?
The basic question.
So to one of your earlier points, Commissioner Wright, we did include a link to the information we were able to access relative to the, the 1998 plan that many people are discussing. We have not analyzed that plan because that's not the proposed project, which is why you don't see extensive analysis of that proposal. That is not the applicant's proposal for the quarry reclamation plan. And so, simple answer from the staff's perspective in relation to that question, what staff will acknowledge is there are many different ways to reclaim the quarry and many different ways to do it that would comply with state law and the municipal code. And so we have before us a particular proposal from this applicant and that's what the staff has, has analyzed.
Commissioner Ferguson.
I have a procedural question and then I guess a follow-up question.
Can we, can we speak loudly?
Yeah. Loud into the microphone. My procedural question is, is there not a way that the commission can be provided the packets in full with more review time? The public may not be aware, but I received a 20, 2,661-page document the afternoon of Thursday last week. As a person with a full-time job and three little kids, it's a big ask. It would be a big ask for me to read that cover to cover without even thinking about referencing and cross-checking and, and doing my own verifications. A lot of these are opinions of people or, you know, one expert's opinion versus another expert's opinion. So the question is, is there no way to agendize these further in advance, especially when we know it's a, some of our meetings are short, they're 10 minutes long, they're 20 minutes long, some of our meetings are multiple days? Is there no way to fully agendize and lock in a, a agenda packet and give it to us two weeks in advance, three weeks in advance?
I'll start by saying our normal procedure to release the agenda packets on the Wednesday prior to the Monday commission meeting exceeds the requirements of state law and exceeds the requirements that, exceeds the procedures of most jurisdictions that I know about. And so we are already doing what we can in that regard. We do not have the ability to lock in and produce an agenda packet a week, two weeks or more in advance consistently. There are too many demands on our time and unknowns very often relative to public noticing and so forth that just does not make that possible for us to commit to.
Too many demands on your time is an ironic way to put that. Okay. My follow-up, which is I guess more comment than question, as I was struggling with this and struggling to figure out how to wrap my head around several thousand pages of documents in three days, it occurred to me that it's possible we're missing the forest with the trees here and it seems like every bit of analysis is done pursuant to the final end product of when this project is completed. It seems to me that actually the proposal is the project itself. It's a for-profit soil fill and every single bit of analysis I look at here seems to address only what it's going to look like after and not actually that what this project is, is a, is a for-profit business on the quarry, trucking in soil. And it doesn't address that as the development itself, it addresses the final.
Guys, guys, please. I don't want to have to take another recess because we're going to be here a long time anyway.
And as such, I found myself.
Is there a question?
This is a question. I found myself reading in our notes from the last meeting, which is what Chair Hauser was talking about, and I went looking for answers to all of the questions I specifically raised and it looked like none of them were really answered in the, in the responses. They even gave reference to answers, but when you go looking for them, none of them are actually there. It's, it says, it's, it's attached, but it's not. It wasn't attached the first time or the second time. So I don't know, was there, I guess my question is, was there an actual thought that, did we analyze this as a, as a project or is it just we're analyzing all this impact as what the final condition would be?
I guess I'm not sure I understand what the question is relative to, did we analyze what this really is versus what the project is? I think the project plainly is an import of soil from various construction project sites in the source areas that have been identified. People have chosen to characterize that in different ways. It does, however, support what the project proposal is ostensibly, which is a quarry reclamation plan. It happens that the soil is coming from particular source locations resulting from particular types of off-site activities. And so I'm not sure that that would have a bearing on how the project would be analyzed relative to the required findings.
Yeah. I understand what you're saying.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner Godwin?
I noticed, much like the previous two commissioners, this is an awful lot of work to do in a couple of days and I am not sure I got through everything in, in a tremendous amount of detail. But one thing that stood out to me that was missing was the seasonal component. We get a lot of rain and we get it concentrated in a few months in the winter. And my understanding of excavation projects as a layman is they can't work real well when the water content of the soil is high and that happens after an extreme rain and there's not much point in trucking more soil in if you aren't depositing it on your target area in this quarry project. So was any thought given to a reduced number of trucks during the winter rainy season and somehow make up for it in the rest of the season? I know there's a cap of 161 and I assume that applies to the summer months when school's out. But it seems to me planning, there's been an inadequate amount of planning if you assume on a month like February where you might get, you typically get about four inches of rain, you might get six, that you're going to bring in as much soil as you will in July when you typically get virtually zero. So that's my question, or maybe I missed it in this massive document.
Sure. I think that's a question probably best asked of the applicant, whose civil engineer is present, to describe how they factor in the seasonality and precipitation and so forth in their, their plans related to degrading operations. What I can say is extensively documented in, in the materials is the water quality plan to make sure that during precipitation events, soil does not exit the site in a way that will be damaging to the creek and other surrounding water bodies. So that is addressed in the plan.
Yes, I saw that portion and I thought that was handled well. But my concern is what do you do when you've got a mound of dirt and water weighs a lot and the thing is saturated? And do you keep working and assuming you're going to produce the same amount of work? Or you're, or you, do you make assumptions that you're going to do less when everything's soaked and it's difficult to drive a car in the driving, or a truck in this case, in the driving rain? Or do you just assume you're going to average it out and live within your cap?
My thoughts are, construction work is seasonal, especially related to grading. When it's raining, you can't place fill and engineer fill. So during those types of rain events, I would assume that import would probably not be happening and the construction on-site wouldn't be happening. I mean, that's typical of grading projects. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
That partially answers it, but if we've got a cap on the truckloads and you're going to bring in, per the plan, a quarter million cubic yards a, a year, do you have an adequate buffer to move the, the truck trips that you were expected to have, that you were rained out of or there was some other incident, access to roads or whatever and you're not able to do? What do we do with that? Are you going, is there, people are going to come back and request amendments, say, well, we can't live with 160 caps, it's got to go to 200 or 225 or something like that till we make up for this? Or is the project going to get extended and it's, is it really more of a five-year project than a four-year project if we have the right weather events? And that's, that's the kind of questions I didn't find addressed in the more than 2,000 pages of packet I read. And, and I have some interest in that.
Yeah. Commissioner Godwin, I think the applicant would probably be best suited to, to speak more directly to that question.
Okay.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Liel.
Chair Hauser, I think at this time, my question's similar to yours and I think I'm going to hold it for after the applicant's presentation?
Okay, thank you.
Or my top question, I mean.
Okay. I, I may go directly from the applicant's presentation to public comment, so it may be after public comment. Is that okay? Okay. Commissioner Berman?
I have the same sentiment as Vice Chair Liel. I do have some questions, but they may be answered by the applicant's presentation and I'm fine for those questions to come after public comment.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Berman. So with that, we will ask the applicant to give a presentation if they have one. The applicant will have 10 minutes for their presentation and then three minutes after public comment for any rebuttal. Is the applicant present?
Chair Lial, Vice Chair, or excuse me, Chair Hauser, Vice Chair Lial, members of the commission, thank you for the opportunity to once again present to you the Pacific Quarry Reclamation Project. I'm Billy Gil-Martin and I'm the applicant. Tonight, before we get started, I would like to start with first, paying attention here to the screen and looking at the quarry today. The quarry is a dormant mine for the last 37 years, currently out of compliance with the law, unreclaimed with out-of-control erosion and uncontrolled runoff. And we are here today to propose a project that'll turn the site into something that looks like this. And we're doing this because the Surface Mining and Reclamation Act requires all closed mines to be reclaimed and our mine has been closed for 37 years. The law also states that if the mine is not reclaimed, the city can lose control of the process and the DMR can come in and take over. And we don't want that to happen. That's why we've been here working for years to seek an approved project. And our goals are clear. We want to bring the Rockaway Quarry site into compliance with SMARA and with the city's municipal code. We want to minimize project impacts to the maximum extent feasible and improve the environment. And our project does improve the environment. In our last hearing in June, we heard lots of feedback, great questions from you, very passionate comments from the public and written questions from the planning department and all of which could be broken down into four primary categories. Is there a way to reduce the total amount of fill required to reclaim the quarry? How can we limit the potential impacts of the trucking? What improvements to testing can we make for the project? And how are we going to ultimately provide the transparency and accountability to the project standards? And so as a project team, after June, we worked very diligently, we sharpened our pencils, we looked at every possibility for how we could reduce the fill on-site and we, while also looking at four opportunities to improve the design. And it hit us, the multipurpose trail on the Southern Bluff was not ADA compliant. And so we made it ADA compliant and as a result, the grades of the project reduced and we're able to reduce the total amount of fill required by 100,000 cubic yards. We also improved the traffic impacts by not allowing any trucks to leave the site or any construction traffic to leave the site during the course of school drop-off hours. We don't want any of our vehicles to compete for road space with parents dropping off their children at school every day. So Monday through Friday, anytime school is in session and kids are being dropped off, no trucks will be allowed to leave the site. Also, we have provided for routine, independent, third-party soil testing that can be directed by the city with its own engineers and we will reimburse the city for those costs. Above all comments that we received, the most passionate were about traffic. So we just want to take a moment to discuss traffic. The EIR studies the amount of traffic on Highway 1 and what the ultimate impact of trucking traffic is for reclamation. And the increase in traffic is only 0.3%. It's not 10%, it's not 20%, it's 0.3%. We also made significant improvements to our testing program of the project. With respect to air, we've included work procedures that would stop work in the event of high winds and also if the air quality on-site passes a certain threshold. With respect to water, we've provided for a baseline water quality test for Calera Creek and continuous water testing throughout the course of the project and after every rain event on-site so that we ensure that our work does not negatively impact water quality of the creek. We've also provided a complete stormwater pollution prevention plan with the project. With respect to soil, we've, we've included an adaptive management plan process in our project plan, which requires us as the operator to provide monthly submittals to the city, all of our backup paperwork for testing, chain of custody forms, trucking tags, any other items as it relates to traffic and other items related to community interests. We will meet with the city on a monthly basis to ensure that we're a good neighbor. We also have included additional screening for fungi so that we can make sure that the soil received on-site doesn't bring in sudden oak death and various things that Commissioner Ferguson was asking about in the last hearing. We want to be a good neighbor. We want this project to be transparent. We want you to be confident that we will be accountable to the standards of the project. That's why we have included, in addition to our adaptive management plan, an annual review process and contingency plans to monitor the performance of traffic against the standards of the plan. There were other concerns that were identified during the course of last hearing and of course, questions that we received from the planning department. Items such as gas emissions, impacts on wetlands, impact on sea life, and impact on native species. And I don't have time to go through each one of those this evening, but just to talk through a few. With respect to wetlands, we'll be adding 400% more wetlands on-site. With respect to native species on-site, we've received approval from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife for our project design, which is the federal agency who's required to make sure that we maintain native species. Chair Hauser, your question about, with respect to the minimum amount of fill required for the site is something that we recognize that the community has been talking about lately and I know that, and I'm glad you brought that up today. Cut and fill is essentially a non-starter and the reason for that is because the impacts on residents and business owners and students in the community would be completely untenable. In order to cut the necessary amount of fill from the limestone quarry, you would have to blast the face of the quarry to create enough fill to fill in the bowl of the quarry. That's tantamount an equivalent to living next to a gunfire range. And that's just the start because once you blast the rock from the face of the quarry, you'd have to crush it all day long for years. There's not enough room on-site to have redundant crushers crushing all day long to generate enough fill. You would literally be crushing rock, it would be like living next to an active quarry. Reclamation is about closing the quarry, about stopping quarrying activities, not reopening them. And so the impacts to residents and business owners and students for a cut and fill plan was a non-starter for us. You would essentially be trading trucks for bombs and trucks for an active quarry. So please, tonight, approve our plan to proceed. We want to take.
Hey, guys, it's not, it's not fair. It's not fair.
We're here to take a site that is currently unsafe, that is currently out of compliance with the law, that has uncontrolled erosion, uncontrolled runoff with invasive plants and degraded wetlands and bring it into a site that is safe, has formal public access, which is now ADA compliant with gradual slopes engineered for stability and landscaped with native species. Thank you for your time. Our entire project team is here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gil-Martin. At this point, we're going to go to public. You know what? At this point, we're going to take a five-minute recess and then we'll open public comment. Okay. So by way of reminder, everyone will have two minutes to speak. I have a stack of speaker cards here. I'm going to call out the person and the next two people on deck, so you can kind of be prepared. I will then go to any people on Zoom after we hear everybody in the room. If you have not yet filled up, a yellow speaker card, I believe they're still located on the table on the back, please fill one out and bring one to staff if you would like to speak. And then, again, I just want to underscore, I know it's hard and I know I sound like a broken record, but if there are people who have differing opinions, we don't want them to feel intimidated, right? So let's try to be respectful and I'm really looking forward to hearing everyone. So with that, the first person to speak is Kimberly Finale, followed by Cata Gomes and Melinda McNaughton.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you so much for holding this community meeting this evening. I'll keep it short. I was more intending to go last, so I guess my last card went on the top. But also, I'll just start by saying, I'm not sure if you all recall the firestorms that took place up in Sonoma County about five years ago or so, and the cleanup that had to be done throughout Fountain Grove and Coffee Park area. My main office that I work of, out of, is just a couple miles north of the Fountain Grove Coffee Park area. And the dump trucks that were hired by the government to come through and clean up the debris was, it just was mayhem. It was mayhem and it was dangerous. And there was an article written in the Press Democrat, let's see here. Oh, 2018, February 6th. This is regarding a crash that took place. These trucks, you know, these super dumps, they weigh, let's see, I have my notes here. They weigh about 15 tons and when they're loaded, they carry about 26 tons of debris. So that's a total of approximately 40 tons. And when they come barreling down these hills and their brakes go out, you've got a real problem. And when these trucks come in and out of our town weighing 40 tons, you know, I'm just wondering, who's going to be monitoring the maintenance records on these trucks? And, you know, so the applicant here has offered to, you know, provide all sorts of records. Do we get the maintenance records on the trucks? Because that's what I want to see. I want to know if those brakes are in good working order, because what are those trucks going to do? You know, these ones here? Cause complete devastation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Kimberly. All right. That is Cata Gomes, followed by Melinda McNaughton, and then Mark Hubble.
Horsia Moore, good evening. My name is Cata Gomes. I'm a Ramitish descendant from the village of Tmigtok along Calera Creek. This project is of great concern to me. This is our ancestral homeland. Our ancestors are buried here. We've been here for thousands and thousands and thousands of years. We are literally part of this soil. I have been doing my research since last I spoke, and I read a report from the Coastal Commission stating that there are three known shell mounds here in Pacifica. Two of them are in Rockaway Beach, one of them is on the quarry parcel. This statement made by the Coastal Commission is also backed up by a report that was done and maps that were done of shell mounds in the San Francisco Bay Area in 1909. It backs up the statements made by the Coastal Commission. Also, the archaeological report that was done in 2002 was incomplete and insufficient. And it needs further archaeological reports and studies to be done in this area before anything can move forward. Culturally, environmental issues are cultural issues. Currently, Mother Nature on your way up over the last almost 40 years has already started to heal the scars that have taken place as a result of colonization. There is currently a healthy, thriving ecosystem, and it deserves our protection. I have contacted the Native American Heritage Commission in Sacramento, and they are currently looking into this exact location and this issue.
Thank you, Cata, for your comments. Melinda McNaughton, followed by Mark Hubble and Krista Dar. Is Melinda here?
Thank you, Commissioners. So I guess I'm concerned about the soil contamination. I'm concerned about where the soil is coming from and what could be in it. Oh, sorry. I'm concerned about where the soil is coming from and what could be in it. And accepting to request, the request to dump the soil in Quarry Park would not only cover acres of healthy soil and ecosystems, but also result in the destruction of native plants, animal habitats, insect species. And moreover, it can contaminate adjacent ecosystems, as we know, including the creek flowing through it, impacting marine life like sea stars, which we've worked tirelessly, tirelessly for years to protect. It's critical to recognize the interconnectedness of everything through rain, wind, and the movement of soil, animals, and humans. Contaminated soil may contain various chemicals, including glyphosate. Glyphosate alone can have up to a 22 and a half year half-life or span in the soil. And the EPA finalized research report indicates 93% of endangered species and plants are injured or killed by glyphosate. This is just glyphosate alone, not naming any of the other toxins. Research now indicates microdoses of glyphosate has multigenerational effects on the endocrine system and DNA of humans, animals, and fish. So testing the soil before loading it into the trucks is paramount to prevent costly remediation efforts later. That could be a big mess. So my question is, what are you going to do? What are, what are the plans for remediation if there is toxins? And for which toxins? There's so many that could be coming in. Regardless of the contamination, the indigenous Ramitish ancestral homeland in the quarry would be buried and desecrated. Thank you.
Thank you, Melinda. Thank you. Okay. Mark Hubble, followed by Krista Dar, followed by Karen Dutton. Is Mark here?
Mark, you're up.
There we go.
Good day, everyone. Good day, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here tonight. I am the person mentioned in the applicant's response who brought the concern over the health of our local sea stars, or starfish, as they call them. Our group of local volunteers, many with advanced-- Our group of local volunteers, many with advanced degrees and ongoing careers in marine biology, have spent much time over the past few years monitoring the health and abundance of sea star populations within a unique intertidal environment in close proximity to the outflow of the quarry pit down Calera Creek. We are not in the least convinced that your plan will not devastate this uniquely precious space. These stars are not standalone entities, as you described them, but part of an expansive, unique, complex, and vital shoreline environment, which your response indicates that you seemingly know nothing about or even care about. Your words, the analysis also concluded that there is no evidence to indicate any specific impacts to starfish. How would you know? You obviously have not conducted the proper studies or consulted with qualified sources, nor do you seem to be in the least bit interested in learning about anything that might not go your way. There's much danger in that attitude. How can you make such a determinative statement based upon your refusal to conduct adequate, at-the-point-of-sight testing for toxins on every load of soil to be deposited in the quarry? The reason that I'm bringing this up again is to reflect the unmitigated arrogance that characterizes this document throughout. No mandatory testing protocol for soil toxicity, even though the soil is destined for a highly populated area. It might be that hiding behind a shield of limited liability and corporation has bolstered your confidence in knowing that you could be financially shielded from the citizens of Pacifica with the fallout of your actions. Is that the end of my time?
It does. Thank you, Mark.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Krista Dar, followed by Karen Dutton, followed by Norman Dutton. Pardon me? Well, I've asked everyone to stop clapping. No, just kidding. Krista Dar, followed by Karen Dutton, followed by Norman Dutton.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm a Pacifica resident. I'm also an emergency room nurse at Mills Peninsula, and I have grave concerns about all this extra dump truck traffic delaying emergency services. I know we have, in the medical field, we have a term that we say, "time is brain," because stroke is the number one cause of death in the United States. And if you throw a clot and get a stroke in your brain, it cuts off blood flow to other parts of your brain. If you get to the emergency room in time, we can get that clot out, and the patient can have a full recovery. Every second counts. If you don't get the clot out in time, you have severe debilitating effects, including death. And that's the same with a heart attack, too. We can, you get there in time, we'll go to the cath lab, get the clot, save the cardiac I'm just encourage all of you to just say no to this plan. We can't let a limited liability corporation dump all this soil in our quarry under the guise of reclamation, mining reclamation. The quarry has already reclaimed itself. It's actively reclaimed.
Okay.
I've seen an abundance of wildlife and flora and fauna. I've saw San Francisco garter snake in there. There's all kinds of birds. And then there, you know, I heard them speak about ADA trails. That trail right now, that paved trail through the quarry, I've seen a wheelchair on there. I've seen people that can't climb hills with canes walking down, little kids on tricycles. Are we going to have dump trucks going by spewing exhaust fumes in the air? No.
Thank you, Krista. All right. So we're going to go to Karen Dutton, and then Norman Dutton, and Nico Bellomini. I just want to say, it's really hard to get up in front of this many people as a member of the community and speak. It's probably, it's hard for everyone, whether you're a Commissioner, the community, the applicant. It's really hard. So I can't imagine how much harder it will feel if you're intimidated to come and speak your mind. So please try to refrain from clapping. I appreciate where everyone is coming from, but please.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to speak. My name is Karen Dutton. I have lived in Lindemar since 1982. Because I'm a lawyer, I was interested to see what the law about reclamation actually says, what the statutes actually say, so I started reading it. I'd like to draw your attention to the definition of reclamation in Section 2733 of the Public Resources Code. According to that statute, "reclamation means," the combined, I'm quoting, "the combined process of land treatment that minimizes water degradation, air pollution, damage to aquatic or wildlife habitat, flooding, erosion, and other adverse effects from surface mining operations, so that mined lands are reclaimed to a usable condition that is readily adaptable for alternate land uses, presumably other than mining, and create no danger to public health or safety." This project creates damage to public health and safety. Dumping dirt of questionable quality and driving trucks through an area which makes using a public trail unsafe is inconsistent with that definition for reclamation. This property has been safely used by the public in its current state for more than 20 years. At some point in the past, the city found the condition of the property to be sufficiently reclaimed to purchase a section in the middle and put a paved public trail on it. At this stage, the proposed reclamation would do more harm than good, and I ask that you not approve it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Norman Dutton, followed by Nico Bellomini, followed by Connie Menefee.
Good evening. My name is Norman Dutton. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm a long-term resident of Pacifica. I've lived here since 1960. The proposed quarry reclamation plan is a solution in search of a problem. The stated goal is to return the quarry back to its natural state. While I do remember the quarry when they were actively removing rock from there, the quarry has not been in operation for almost my entire adult life. Since the quarry was shut down, nothing has been done to it, which by definition leaves it in its natural state. That means the stated goal has been accomplished and nothing more needs to be done. As far as the zero fill alternative and the disruption to the Valamar area, I grew up in Valamar. I went to Valamar School when the quarry was openly producing rock. And yeah, they did explode dynamite over there. We could hear it, but it's like, it didn't shake the ground. You didn't, you know, it wasn't disruptive. You didn't even really notice it. It was just there. I remember being out on the playground, and you hear boom, you know, it was in the distance. It was not a problem. I also object to the traffic this is likely to cause. All you need is for one of these trucks to break down on the highway, and you have a situation like we had a few years ago when a Caltrans contractor blocked off one lane in Fairway Park to do work, and we had traffic backed up into Daly City long after the commute time was over. It was, you know, people sat there for hours. It was terrible. So anyway, you know, but I mean, if you do decide to do it, the payoff when the project is completed, and all these great pictures, it looks like it'll be awesome, but on the other hand, it's already done, so I don't know why we're even talking about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Norman. Nico Bellomini, followed by Connie Menefee, followed by Chris Redfield. Nico Bellomini.
Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Nico Bellomini. I'm a 21-year resident, my whole life. I grew up in Pacifica. And what I think I just heard from the applicant, it sounds like a sugar-coated way of saying I'm profiting off a dirt dump to fund my development. Basically what I thought I heard. I run a hauling company, so I'm very familiar with dirt and the importance of soil testing, because a lot of these dirts can contain heavy metals, pesticides, asbestos. I don't know how you'd possibly be able to regulate 874,000 cubic yards of dirt. And on average, I'm not sure if it's a free dump or what the policy is on that. It's usually cost around $120 per yard, so that equates to about $104 million, $880,000 of saved dump fees, which could go to paying off anybody for soil testing to say, "my soil is clean." How are we going to know that that is actually the case? And I'm not sure how this is beneficial for any kind of wildlife that's already pretty much bounced back when they stopped mining from now. So, yeah. And, you know, we're going to have 40-ton dump trucks flying down the highway at a rate of one every three minutes. Who's going to pay for the potholes and, you know? We're going to be the ones running over them, you know? So I think we're going to end up being the ones who have to pay for this in the long run, so thank you.
Thank you, Nico. Connie Menefee, followed by Chris Redfield, followed by Susan Herring.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Connie Menefee. The last time I appeared before you, in June of 2023, I identified myself as a 30-year veteran of the quarry wars. It remains my opinion that reclamation of the quarry is long overdue. Reality check: The quarry is a former mining pit. If it was pristine, largely untouched coastal land, I would not be standing here tonight. Contrary to selective next-door photos of the quarry, the property is scarred, ugly, and dangerous. State law requires reclamation of this distressed mining property. Pacifica risks loss of local control if the state assumes lead agency status and takes over reclamation implementation. None of us want that. Our city must act affirmatively in order to retain local control over restoring this property and all that that entails. Regarding specific methods of restoration, be careful what you wish for. Cut and fill may very well bring ear-piercing grinding and vibration that will leave you begging for soil importation. Again, as someone who has participated in 30 years of negotiations surrounding the fate of the quarry, I suspect that the cut and fill suggestion is just another delay tactic calculated to preserve the status quo, which is perpetuating a public access dog run on private property in a coveted coastal zone. Please, Honorable Commissioners, I urge you to approve the revised quarry reclamation project and recommend city council approval of the proposed rezoning and development plan. Thank you.
Okay. Connie, I'm sorry, Chris Redfield, followed by Susan Herring and Rich Campbell. Thank you, Connie, for your comment.
Good evening, Staff and Commissioners. Chris Redfield, as I studied this revised reclamation plan, some words and thoughts kept coming to mind. The first word was objectivity. That's a quality that is appreciated or should be by all. Suddenly, a plethora of Ps popped up: process, proposals, public, protections, preservation, perspective, parcels, pedestrian, professional, private, pejoratives, projects, planning, passion, progress, PDX, potential, permits. And last but not least, Pacifica. I know you have and will consider those words and so many more in your work. The quarrel of the questions of the quandary of the quarry continue, and I thank you for your thoughtful consideration and objectivity. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Susan Herring, followed by Rich Campbell, followed by Peter. I have just Peter. Is this Peter Loeb? Yeah? Just Peter? Yeah? Okay. Like Madonna? Okay. Susan, please go ahead.
Thank you, Commissioners, for this hearing. The first thing I have to say is this is unceded Ramitish Aloni land, and they need to be consulted about what happens there. We will have possible toxins flowing into the ocean and the tide pools. I just have points. I don't really have a discussion, so I like the reduced fill alternative, and I appreciate your having brought that up, Chair Hauser. All these trucks coming through every three to four minutes is just going to be, I think, a traffic nightmare. And even if they don't have outgoing trucks at school pickup time, drop-off time, they're just going to wait, and then all of a sudden, there's going to be a gazillion trucks leaving. That's what it sounds like to me. And just the last thing I have to say is, Pacifica is not a dump. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Susan. Rich Campbell, followed by Peter Loeb, followed by Gloria Saifan.
Hello, Chair Hauser, Commissioners. First, I'd really like to spend my appreciation to you all for the time and attention you've paid to this project and the application and the packet of information. I know it's not easy. I was a planning Commissioner for several years here, so I know sometimes it can be a thankless task. I want to say just first off that, looking at the packet of information and the information presented to you in that packet, you are on solid policy and legal grounds denying this project. I mean, feel comfortable in doing that. The packet has, it does not have, it's not supported by the evidence that it claims to have. And so, you know, the first thing I want to talk about is safety. The department really seems to rest its decision-making here on safety, on, we're going to get better, safer trails at the end of this process if we reclaim the quarry the way that the applicant wants them to reclaim it. And they make, and it's all through the report, how steep and unsafe the hillsides are and the trail system is. But there's really, other than that belief, there's really nothing, there's no record evidence of that. There's no history of people falling or just being too steep. And then the interesting part is that, you know, if you go to the, if you go to the website of the agency that's in charge of reclamation plans, the state agency, the State Division of Mine Reclamation, they're on record in a June 13, 2013, letter to the city, saying that the quarry was deemed stable with no identified public health and safety issues. And that's not in the packet. I don't see it. You should have it, heck, that packet has everything. You've got the applicant attorney's resume in that packet. So you should have that letter, and that just tells me that you can't rely on this staff report. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. All right. Peter Loeb, followed, Peter Loeb, followed by Gloria Saifan, followed by, I'm sorry, Stofan, followed by Paul Stofan.
Good evening. Peter Loeb, I've lived next door to the quarry for 49 years now. I share Commissioner Ferguson's concern about getting a 2660-page packet. I have an additional concern. I submitted five different comments on Saturday to the public comment thing, and as far as I can tell, the public comments were not posted until about 3:00 this afternoon, and there's 242 pages of those. So I'm concerned that the Commissioners have had an opportunity to read my comments and understand what I'm saying. I don't have time to summarize them in two minutes. The final EIR is inadequate under SEQA. We have a report from Grissette Environmental Consulting explaining, among many things, that there's an incorrect analysis of air quality impacts in greenhouse gas. that there's an incorrect analysis of air quality impacts and greenhouse gas emissions. If you, what's before you tonight is to approve an EIR that I'm saying is inadequate, and I will contest that if you approve that EIR. It's possible to reclaim the quarry with cut-and-fill on-site. There does not appear to be any benefit to the city, only pain for all the people that are here to talk to you. Traffic impacts and all the things that people are talking about. What is the benefit to the city? Why should we do this? Again, I agree with the Commissioners, this is a profit-making proposal that benefits the applicant, but it doesn't benefit us in any way that I can see. My time is up. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. So Gloria Stofan, followed by Paul Stofan, followed by Rick Najera. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing names here.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name's Gloria Stofan, and as a longtime resident of East Rockaway Beach, I'm very concerned about the quarry reclaimation plan. Trucks, a hundred and forty-one, forty-six trucks, four years? That just seems overwhelming. I mean, that's, that's pretty scary to me. My concern's that it's a bad, it's bad enough for me trying to get onto Highway One from Rockaway Beach in the morning and in the late afternoon. So I can't even imagine the traffic and the craziness of this all when this project begins. Large trucks on Highway One carrying waste dirt, contaminated soil? This is not good for our city to approve. In my walks through the quarry, I've heard and encountered many remarks about how beautiful Pacifica is and how lucky we are to live here. I would hate to see any contaminated soil dumped into the quarry and destroy any part of our beautiful, open space. I also thought our city was in some serious discussions concerning our shoreline with the Coastal Commission. Climate change, sea level rise, managed retreats are terms that are being discussed and its effects on our coastal. Anyway, please, I urge you as Planning Commissioners not to let this reclamation plan happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Paul Stofan, followed by Rick Najera, followed by Lois Ward.
Paul Stofan, 510 Rockaway Beach. It's my mother that spoke last. This is my first time actually showing up to these rooms. And it's frustrating because I'm not a tree hugger. I just love this city. And it really crushes me that we'd even think about throwing these tons of dirt from areas we don't know. Keep the dirt we have. They already screwed the quarry up when I was a kid. I can remember the horses, snakes. It hurts. And I got grandkids coming up. We walked these hills. And yeah, they're dangerous, but that's us as humans to walk through these quarries and see the natural beauty. And I'd sure hate to start coughing up blood because I allowed some project that you guys allowed. And that wouldn't be fun. So I urge you all to rethink what's going on here. And it is, it's dirt for profit. That's all I can see. Thanks.
Thank you, Paul. Rick Najera, followed by Lois Ward, followed by Wesley Rich.
Thank you. I'm Lois Ward, and I've lived in Pacifica for thirty years, and I'm concerned about what a lot of people have talked about, the traffic. Even though the project has been made a tiny bit smaller, it still has an unacceptable amount of traffic, I think, would happen. I'm also very concerned about having the soil come from a foreign area and the possible environmental impacts. And one thing that came up tonight is I'm concerned about the process. It was very distressing to hear that your hard-working Commissioners get two thousand pages of information three or four days before. And the answer from the city of that they're complying with the law, that may be, but it just doesn't make sense, and it's not fair. And I would hope that it would be, in the future, people would be given more time to really review these important projects. And I really appreciate all the time you're spending on that, and I would say I hope that you will vote against this project. Thank you.
I think I, I think we skipped Rick. Did Rick want to speak? Okay, I'll move Rick to the end and give him an opportunity at the end. So that brings it, Wesley Rich, followed by Larry Arnt, followed by Suzanne Moore. Is Wesley coming to the podium? Okay. I will also move Wesley to the back, which goes to Larry Arnt. And you can, yes, you can bring your comment to staff, and they'll pass it to me. Hi. And sorry, let me just give everyone a chance. So Jan Turner and Richie Belton next. Oh, I'm sorry. Suzanne Moore, then Jan Turner, then Richie Belton.
Good evening, Commissioners. I was going to ask why the lower fill alternatives weren't being considered, but Chair took care of asking that question. And the response from staff seemed to be, well, we didn't get any such proposals from the applicant. We just got this one. And the applicant's response was, well, this is the only tenable plan for that site. So I would urge you to be skeptical of that claim from the applicant and look for better approaches. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Suzanne, followed by Jan, and followed by Richie.
Good evening, Commissioners and City Staff. Suzanne Moore from The Manor. The quarry is a favorite place to walk for our family, and we've taken many family and friends with us. I saw my first fox in the wild in the quarry, have heard coyotes, yep, found snakes, have seen numerous birds, finches, red-winged blackbirds, phoebies, herons, ducks, egrets. Nature has done its best to find a home among the scars of our mining. This reclamation plan is terrible. Please send it back to the city and consider plans with less environmental impact. I understand the 2016 reclamation plan meets state standards. We have a viable option. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne. All right. Jan Turner, followed by Richie Belton, followed by Ellen Hague. Is Jan here? Okay, I'll move Jan to the end as well. All right. Richie Belton, then Ellen, then Michael Turner.
Ho Shemakam, Ho Shemurmakam. Good evening, y'all. Ek Raka' Richie, Ra'ket Ramatouche from Timiktak. My name is Richie. I'm a descendant from the Timiktak village, the village site that we're talking about. I want to start first by doing a land acknowledgement for my ancestors. This is unceded Ramatouche territory. Every time I go somewhere and I speak, I acknowledge that, if it's my territory or somebody else's. Unceded Ramatouche territory. I recommend maybe the city here, when you have meetings, maybe acknowledge that. It would be very respectful for our ancestors. They are listening. Us descendants, we're listening too. That helps to right some of the disrespect and the wrongs that happened. Give you a history of the quarry. Our ancestors, it was atrocious what happened to them. They were enslaved in those quarries. They were forced to excavate and dig and work themselves to death. I'm sure probably many of them died right in that quarry. I mean, let's really look at that quarry and what it is. What does that represent? Our ancestors were also, you know, like my cousin, she says, we've been doing a lot of research and finding out, there's burials, there's burial grounds there, there's places that we're not sure where they are. There's even been a massacre site that was, came clear to us recently. It was very disturbing. There was a bone doctor that determined that the bone fragments that they found, those ancestors were bludgeoned to death with clubs. We know what happened to them. It was at a time when the extermination period was happening in this, in this state. Look at Governor Barnett, what he did. So it's important to acknowledge what's going on there. Those trucks come through there, they're going to be cutting haul roads and disturbing, they're going to be digging our ancestors up. It's going to happen. It's going to happen if you let them do that. I guarantee you it's going to happen. And I guarantee you, they won't do the right thing when it happens. And just one last thing, our contractor here is speaking about the zero excavation policy, about how hard that ground is, it'd have to explode and dynamite. He's right. Yeah, it is very hard. It is. The face of that rock mountain is solid rock. It's not eroding. I walked all through there today. He's right. It is solid. Solid as a rock.
Thank you, Richie. Thank you for your contribution.
So with that, thank you. Thank you, Ansa.
Ellen Hague, followed by Michael Turner, followed by Danny Astraia.
Good evening. My name is Ellen Hague. I'm a resident of Pacifica. I strongly oppose the Bayland Soil Landfill Project being considered for Pacifica. I've lived in Pacifica for almost fifty years. This is one of the most ridiculous, irresponsible, money-making schemes I've heard of in all those years. To approve this project will cause harm to every person living in Pacifica. I urge you to not approve this project and to support the health and well-being of Pacifica and the people who live here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Michael Turner, followed by Danny Astraia, followed by Amy, I think this is Harley.
Hanley.
Hanley, excuse me. Is Michael here? Okay. Then we'll move on to Danny Astraia. And anyone who has a speaker card here that isn't coming to the podium, I will give you an opportunity again at the end. So Danny Astraia, followed by Amy, followed by Susan DeJardain. Okay, Amy, you are up.
Ellen?
Yes, and then Susan, and then Jonathan Cordero.
Thank you so much for the time. And thank you so much for honoring all of us that love our wonderful town. I've lived here for thirty-five years, live in Sharp Park, and I feel sad and shocked about this project. Just on, to follow up, actually, what Mark Kubble had said. We do a starfish count at every mine is tied in collaboration with San Francisco State. Our fragile population was almost eradicated, but it returned from a wasting disease. In fact, this particular place in Rockaway Beach called Aramee Point, which Mark actually had named after our indigenous people, is, any untoward contamination would affect that fragile starfish community. Pacifica has the most prolific return in the Rockaway Beach area at Aramee Point, from Washington State to San Diego. Any change would seriously endanger our starfish community that has finally returned. Please, please don't allow this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Suzanne DeJardain, followed by Jonathan Cordero, followed by Nancy Tierney. All right. Are you, Susan?
I'm Nancy.
You're Nancy? All right.
Okay. Nancy Tierney, I live in The Manor District. Planning Commissioners, the notion around reclamation of a former mining site makes sense. In fact, one could argue it's required to restore an environmentally damaged site to a safe and healthy condition for the benefit of the public. And yet, as I read about the proposed project, that is, the revised project, it strikes me as misguided. What was defined in the 1998 reclamation plan involving no imported fill and instead would have obtained material to fill reclamation areas by altering the existing topography of the site has morphed into a project hauling in one hundred and forty-six truckloads a day for four years, and everybody knows this now, totaling eight hundred and seventy-four thousand cubic yards of fill. Rather than focusing on the modest reduction in imported fill in the recent revised reclamation plan, I'd ask, what compelled the city to abandon the 1998 reclamation plan? Perhaps the more compelling questions are why this plan and why now? As stated in the staff report, the revised project complies with the general plan strategy for future development on the quarry's site. Yet, with considerable and extended disruption to the community and major overhaul of the site, to say nothing of the overwhelming expense, the merits of undertaking in this project are questionable. I encourage you to not adopt the resolution to certify and adopt the FEIR. Instead, given these and other concerns from the community, think hard about the wisdom of proceeding with the revised project.
Thank you, Nancy. Is Susan DeJardain here and looking to speak? Okay. All right. Jonathan, followed by Cindy Abbott, and then Cliff Lawrence.
Good evening, Commissioners and Staff. My name is Jonathan Cordero. I'm the Chair of the Ramatouche Aloney. I am also Executive Director of our nonprofit, the Association of Ramatouche Aloney. And I apologize for not being available this last year and these last few months. I've been suffering from a life-threatening illness. I'm in complete remission, by the way. And I am back, and I have a few things to share with you. The first is, is we've had a long, ongoing relationship with the City of Pacifica, going on fifteen years now. And we've supported ecological and habitat restoration, and immediately in the surrounding the project area, we've consulted on the development of the Visitor Center at the Sanchez Adobe. We've worked on a couple of mural projects in the City of Pacifica, and we're continuing to work, for example, to increase stream flow and fish passage in San Pedro Creek and other projects. In the final EIR, the document stated that the city has prepared the SEQA document, and any qualifying tribal consultation requests would be untimely at this stage. And I am here to ask you to engage in tribal consultation with the Association of Ramatouche Aloney and the Ramatouche Aloney people. Even though the law says it's not required, I strongly suggest that you do. And there is nothing to present the city from engaging in tribal consultation at any time in this process. One of the reasons for the request is that there are serious errors in the reports for the archaeological sites in question, SMA 162 and 268. the archaeological sites in question, SMA 162 and 268. The report, for example, SMA 162, has not been updated since 1978. The 2009 report on SMA 266 is not sufficient. The core samples for the research were actually conducted outside of the project area and have no bearing on the interior of the project area. And 268 does not assess the midden in the project area that was identified in the 1986 document. So please do not certify the final EIR. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonathan. I'm glad to hear you're feeling better. Okay. Cindy Abbott, followed by Cliff Lawrence, followed by Patricia Kramer.
Cindy Abbott, Sharp Park. The City of Pacifica was voted into being in the late 1950s when North San Mateo County Coastriders cast their vote on incorporation. One of the key issues at the time was San Bruno's intention to utilize the land in today's Pacifica as a dump site. The community pushed back and rejected turning the incredible open space by the sea into a dump. Tonight, inexplicably, the City of Pacifica is recommending that the city do that, to turn it into a dump site. Attitudes in Pacifica is not changed by residents or visitors. Pacifica is not a dump. I'm here to ask that due to an inadequate EIR, lack of all information needed and time to make a sound decision, that you reject the plan and all of the permits for this project. You're being asked to approve an FEIR, a report that you're responsible for saying is adequate in compliance with law, when it's not. We have an EIR expert who has said otherwise. You're being asked to approve an enormous project that's being presented to you without full analysis and disclosure of all alternatives. There are less environmentally impactful ways, as was shown in the property owner's own report from 2016 and 2017, that had reworking the site with just over 100,000 cubic yards of soil. The 2016 Reclamation Plan meets state standards with minimal grading that reduces earth movement to only 108,000 cubic yards. It avoids any additional mining, which I take to mean no exploding necessary. I'd like to ask you to consider what benefit is actually here for this overzealous plan to the community, to those who live here and those that come here on a regular basis. The applicant will receive tens of millions of dollars for reclaiming space that is actively used, loved, and appreciated by a hundred visitors each week. Please just say no. You have the ability to do so, even though the staff did not give you that alternative.
Thank you, Cindy. All right. Cliff Lawrence, followed by Pat Kramer, followed by Jim Kramer.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's Cliff Lawrence. I thank you for this hearing. We were here in June, and since that time, I see nothing in this plan that's really anything about reclamation. And any suggestion I say is a sham. Lately, I've had a lot of public contact. One of the things I was asked to do was to check, see what happened in Burlingame, where apparently some type of similar project did not have the advertised benefit. This is about legalized dumping. And why is the city entertaining this application from a company that's not allowed to do business in San Francisco?
Guys, please, please.
With that, we hear the phrases like felony bribery, convictions. So with that, I was really disappointed to see this March 15th letter. One, so late that staff didn't have time to respond to it, and many other things they didn't get to respond to. But the note in it, I took as a veiled threat, that if we don't take their project, the state's going to come after us. And I don't walk into somebody's home and threaten them. I take this with great umbrage. So there are other ways. We've talked about the 1998, 2016. There are other plans, and I hope that you will consider them. Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff. Patricia Kramer, followed by Jim Kramer, followed by George Yetrakis.
Good evening. I'm Pat Kramer from Sharp Park, and I'm not quite as sick as I sound. I often think about city issues in their historical context, and tonight's no exception. I have two points to make, both related to local history. The first, the Rockaway Quarry is not new. There's evidence that materials from the quarry were used over 200 years ago to whitewash Mission Dolores. Point two, it is also not new to disregard the standing of people who originally lived on this land. This afternoon, I spent some time looking at the website of the Native American Heritage Commission, a group officially charged with tribal consultation. It's clear from their website that their priorities are, one, preserving sacred sites on public lands, and, two, identifying the most likely descendant when human remains are uncovered. Now, I'm going to give you a very superficial one-minute summary of why tribal consultation does not make sense in our locale. Okay, here we go. When porters saw San Francisco Bay in 1769, it was estimated there are about 10,000 people living around the bay. The population began to decline dramatically as soon as Mission Dolores was established. The missions were authorized by the Spanish Crown to convert the Indians during a 10-year period. Thereafter, the Indians were to become good colonists, owning their own land, but it didn't turn out that way. In 1823, anti-clerical Mexico took over control of the mission lands from Spain. The mission lands had claimed about one-sixth of the area of present-day California. Secularization meant that the church would only control the mission buildings themselves. The lands around the missions were then allocated to local Mexican officials. Really? Is that two minutes?
Oh, it's two minutes.
Oh, I timed myself before. Okay, well, you don't get the rest of the history, I guess, but basically, the native people were screwed.
Thank you, Pat. Jim Kramer, followed by George Yetrakis, followed by Lori Goldberg.
I'm Jim Kramer from Sharp Park. I strongly object to this project. I read the details of the staff's response, but they're not adequate. I agree with other speakers challenging the project on several grounds. One, the stated rationale and justification. Two, the inadequacy of the FEIR with legal jeopardy to the city. Three, a persistent uncertainty for the provenance of the fill soil and the knowledge that self-regulation does not work. Four, the exaggeration that reclamation is required of us now, and even if we want to undertake reclamation, is this massive invasive approach really the only and best choice? A lot of these have been brought up by other people. I emphasize that there are only questionable benefits to Pacificans versus certain, many certain looming negative impacts. Plus, there are substantial potentially, potential unintended consequences to public health, the environment, land, and sea. I share the common frustration that these objections have been all raised repeatedly, yet here we are today, still without convincing responses being provided. You, our Commissioners, have been given the impossible task to review in a few days 2,600 pages with a lengthy staff report and resolution. You're offered only a motion to approve the project as is, no alternatives to be considered. Taken together, I have alarming concerns about our process. Of course, you Commissioners know that you can reject or modify the proposal, but it sure feels to me like our staff has pushed it inexplicably, stifling, meaningful discussion. The project is bad for Pacifica, ill-conceived, and unnecessary. I strongly urge Commissioners to reject the FEIR, deny the motion, or change it drastically. As for today's late addition promising third-party soil testing, like many responses, it sounds helpful but demands further details. Sorry, too little, too late. This issue was raised long ago. Why not add it, why try to add it only now with critical details? And as for Chairman Hauser's question, the answer is obvious, it's money for dirt. But the big question is also, is why is the city being an advocate for a development project? I don't think that's really the job of our city officials. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. All right. George Yetrakis, followed by Lori Goldberg, followed by Sam Cassius.
Hi, I'm George Yetrakis. I wanted to thank the Commission for the opportunity to speak and also your time. I know this is a big issue, and I don't envy the decisions that you're going to have to make. I'll try to keep this very short. So while I am a Pacifica homeowner, I also have a professional, sorry about that, I got a professional background in marine affairs coastal zone management policy law, and have worked on similar issues which affect coastal environment riparian and littoral zones. My concern is with the National Environmental Policy Act of 1969, NEPA guidelines, and that the current EIR, if approved as is, is not in compliance with federal law. The reason for this is that NEPA also establishes the Council on Environmental Quality, the CEQ. CEQ regulations require agencies to prepare a supplemental EIS in instances where we learn of, and I quote, "significant new circumstances or information relevant to environmental concerns." This is 40 CFR 1502.9 D12. Clearly, recently mentioned information that cut and fill would suffice in reclamation without import of foreign soil constitutes significant new circumstances relevant to environmental concerns. If approved without a supplemental EIS, there may be significant legal grounds for a NEPA claim, so I would encourage the Commission to, at the very least, require a supplemental EIS, SEIS, before proceeding any further, if not rejecting the proposal outright. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Lori Goldberg, followed by Sam Cassius, followed by Adam Leibert.
Hi, I've lived in Pacifica for 41 years or so, and I have walked through that quarry so many times, and I love it just the way it is. People come from all over and think it's a beautiful area, and I don't know why the Planning Commission is allowing someone that doesn't even live in Pacifica, who's going to profit from it. We're going to have to deal with their awful decisions. Why the Planning Commission, or even the city, is even considering this? I just don't get it. Has there been any studies? There's animals, there's plants that are in the quarry. And I like what some people said, that it has reclaimed itself, I think it's beautiful. I don't know where this applicant guy is talking about this terrible runoff and these erosion of cliffs. I mean, where is he from? I don't see that at all. I know a woman who picks mushrooms and watercress around by the quarry. You're going to ruin all these plants and things for this awful dumping of soil that we don't even know if it's contaminated or not? The traffic, like, how does he know? 0.3% traffic increase? The traffic's often increased probably like 30% without his trucks and his soil and whatever. Has there been studies about the, how's this going to impact the animals? How it impacts the plants? I just went to a talk at the library recently, and they were talking about 30% of birds, there was a 30% decline in birds. And they were like saying, don't even like, when you have leaves fall on the ground, don't even throw them away, because there's bugs and things on those for the birds. So what is this going to do to the animals, the plants that are already in the quarry? The water? And we're right by the ocean. I wonder what the Coastal Commission would think of this plan? Pacifica is not a dump, and if we were right, we would give it back to the Native American Indians.
Thank you, Lori. Sam Cassius, followed by Adam Leibert, followed by Yanko Alten Schmidt.
So Commissioners, this is not a reclamation plan. This is an opportunistic scam to turn Pacifica into a toxic waste dump that will also put our lives in danger. There is no question that the final EIR and the reclamation plan and rezoning should be entirely rejected. The fill is not healthy soil that supports a healthy biome, but industrial waste soil that will be an environmental wasteland. And did I hear a threat from the applicant? Pacifica belongs to us, not a bunch of toxic soil haulers. How is, how is one good climate atmospheric river not going to cause a massive landslide going to the creek into the ocean? How is the shallow groundwater table not going to be contaminated from toxic soil seepage and going into the creek where is Esha and into the ocean, which will be deemed too toxic for recreation use and kill all the marine life? On top of that, we're here to believe that a company not allowed to work in San Francisco due to felony convictions would not be, would not bring contaminated soil into one of the most utilized recreational areas that will be, potentially create a toxic cleanup site after this LLC declares bankruptcy, leaving the citizens of Pacifica with the cost of cleaning up their mess. This is, this goes for all the companies representing bay soils today as well. How can you live with yourselves, going home to your families, knowing that you are turning a good vibrant family coastal town into a toxic waste site? Think about it. If you allow dump trucks to line, would you allow dump trucks to line up straight into the ocean and dump it right there? That's essentially what you're doing. Also, the zoning changes for plan development is not warranted. We're not talking much about that, but we need to consider that as well. Pacifica is not a dump. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. All right. Adam Leibert, followed by Yanko Alten Schmidt, followed by Dan Hillman.
Just quoting from the draft resolution, it says, "The draft EIR determined that the reduced fill alternative would generally achieve the project's objectives and would result in fewer impacts than the project in several resource areas." Then it says, "However, impacts would be similar in the majority of resource areas, such as biological resources and hydrology and water quality." So to me, that sounds like the reduced fill alternative is either the better or the same as the proposed project. Yet the next sentence says, "On balance, the environmental benefits that might be achieved with this alternative are outweighed by its failure to alleviate environmental impacts in most resource areas." And that just seems like weird logic to me, because essentially, the two sentences before that imply that the reduced fill alternative is either the same or better, but then, for some reason, it's being rejected in this draft resolution. So just would love to study the reduced fill alternative more and learn more about that. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Yanko, followed by Dan Hillman, followed by Ashley Gibson.
Good evening. Yanko Alten Schmidt, resident of Lindemar. Loving it there, raising my family there, my boys there, often going to the quarry for walks. As I was hearing about this plan for the first time, I had this big question living in my head, and that was, why? What is actually going on here? What's going on underneath? We heard the developer's presentation here, and I was like, our goal is to reclaim the land, to bring Pacifica into compliance, to help, to help. What we haven't heard is, what could be some other motives? And if you've ever tried to build a house and move some soil and bring that somewhere else, you have to pay a lot of money for that. And we heard that number earlier. It was $102 million for that amount of dirt to be moved elsewhere. And I would love to have an open conversation about that. Like, we were talking about, like, what can make the quarry nicer, what's reclaiming. This is a push and pull, but it's all just gaslighting. It's, this company is standing to gain $102 million, plus or minus, and we should just openly talk about that. What is Pacifica gaining from that? We know there is a risk with toxic soil. We know there's a risk with traffic. We know that this land cannot be used during that time, maybe after one, yes. What is Pacifica standing to gain from this? And maybe we can have a deal. Maybe we can say, this community, for example, the school district, is lacking $3 million of funding, and they have to cut teachers and aides and everybody else, and there's a big deficit there. Can we make a deal that Pacificans earn something from this profit that the company is standing to make? Can we get a donation? Can we say, okay, you can dump this amount of dirt into our community, but every time we see a dump truck, I know my kid is going to get great education in Pacifica. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Dan Hillman, followed by Ashley Gibson, followed by Tom Viall. Dan Hillman? Okay, moving on to Ashley Gibson, followed by Tom Viall, followed by Michael Ballastieri. Okay. Tom, followed by Michael, followed by -- sorry, Tom Viall, followed by Michael, followed by Tom Dennison.
Hey, guys, thanks for your time. It's my first time here. I've been in Pacifica for 43 years. I've been thinking about this project for 20 years in my own head, about things to do, and it's really cool to be kind of the last guy to talk because you get perspective on everybody, you know, in both situations. I am concerned about the soil. I know a lot about it. I have friends that do soil testing and remediation. I'm very familiar with making the soil pH neutral and won't affect the environment. But I'm also concerned about all of the trucks, obviously. I was thinking that we need an overpass and an underpass because these trucks need to turn around. It's going to cause a lot of congestion turning around. One of the things that nobody really brought up is the fact of all the pampas grass invasive species that have to be removed. It really looks like the state is forcing the hand here, so that's unfortunate. It's really great everybody has their ideas here to make this a better proposal, which I agree with, because if the state does get control, I think we're going to lose a lot of the ability to get public opinion on what should be done and the right way to proceed with this. So I'm not, you know, I'm not for it, but I'm not against it either. I would like to put our city on the map. I really love the fact that we're conservative. I love how beautiful our city is. So much to be grateful for to live here. I really like what Sam had to say too about, you know, the concern for the soil and the leaching, the leaching in the ground. That's really something to really consider. I'd also like to see, as part of the proposal, a frontage road right behind that row of cypress trees as an emergency access road about 40 feet wide, which allows the trucks to go and also any emergency services to bypass the highway to get on with their business. And also, you know, it'd be great if the city could generate more income. I'll leave with that.
Thank you. Okay. Michael Ballastieri, followed by Tom Dennison, followed by Dan Stedjnik.
Hello, hello, good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Ballastieri. I've lived in Pacifica my whole life, 55 years. I've lived in Rockaway Beach while the mine was still operational and used to play there when I was a kid and everything. When I found out today that they're planning on bringing dirt and potentially toxic dirt and dumping it in Pacifica, I was astonished and just, it's the wrong thing to do. I don't know much about the planning, environmental, everything they said, but one thing I saw when they put it on the screen, they said, "This is only going to affect traffic by 0.3%." I can tell you, that's -- any truck that's going to come from that side of the highway is going to have to, when it leaves, it's going to have to make a left turn, and that's going to cause the light to turn red for all the cars coming up and down the highway. So it's more like a 30%, 20 to 30% impact. Every three minutes, there's going to be a truck there waiting for a light, a 50,000-pound truck. It's not some little Prius that's going to make it to turn on the highway. It's going to slow things down. It's going to be dangerous. I've seen a lot of bad fatal accidents with big trucks like that. This is not a good idea. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Michael. Okay. Tom Dennison, followed by Dan Stedjnik, and then I'm going to go to the cards of people whose names I called that did not come up. If you have not spoken and want to, I am getting to the end of the yellow cards. We will then take a recess, and then we will go to public comment on Zoom. Okay, so Tom.
Evening Commissioners. Thank you very much for listening to all the concerned citizens.
Oh, in the microphone, please. Sorry.
Evening Commissioners. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to all the concerned citizens. My name's Tom Dennison. I've moved here in '88, the year after the quarry closed, and I've walked through there many times. Shrubs that weren't even ankle high are now full grown trees. And there's at least three speakers talked about more, far more than I can say, how the quarry is reclaiming itself now, within the legal definitions of reclamation. The drainage, I've been up there during El Nino storms. Nothing goes north, nothing goes west, nothing goes east because of the hills. But I've never seen anything draining into the creek. So when they talked about the drainage there, I don't see that. Many Pacifica politicians talked about how the environment is their economy. So we're going to clog up our one way into the city, and so there goes our tourists and all that money goes with it. Why would they want to come here to just see a big pile of dirt? The traffic, you know, people, a lot of people brought up top, talk about the traffic. Mr. McGilgan, I'd recommend you go back to your elementary school books and learn how to calculate percent. Really? 0.3% of 1%? That's insulting. Twice I've been part of the 33% minority that voted to develop the quarry for housing. Mr. Peebles was actually going to move stuff out. Neither one of those developers is going to be adding a million tons of dirt. So if that could be a separate line item, I would recommend, you know, approving it for housing, but not for a million feet, tons of dirt. I used to be in the Navy. You know, a million tons of dirt, that's equivalent to 11 aircraft carriers. Not the small Hornet, if you've ever been through that in Alameda, takes 15 of those. Mr. McGilgan, I do have a recommendation what you can do with 200,000 tons of that dirt of yours. Why don't you give London Breed a call? She's a Mary, San Francisco, you might know her. Tell her you're really unable right now to go fill up that, the Hunter's Point Old Dry Dock that's not used.
Thank you, Tom. Okay. So we have gotten some more speaker cards, so I will go to those that we know are here prior to moving to people that were not here when I called them. So Dan, followed by Elaine McKean, followed by Jennifer Sloan, and then Marge Davis.
Thank you Commissioners for being here tonight. I just want to remind folks here that planning represents the people. The applicant represents themselves. I'm going to draw a direct line here between how people Pacifica who have been harmed by the quarry historically can recover any profits made from this project. Your title attorney is your friend. If you live in Fairway Park, Rockaway, or Valamar, you should call your title attorney tomorrow and offer them a copy of the second page of what I've handed out, the Oriard Report, where hundreds of people in Rockaway in 1977 reported that their foundations were cracking from excessive blasting. The first page of that shows that from 1914 to 1940, the EB Stone Quarry was taking out 500 railcars of crushed rock a month from Rockaway Beach. And that's from the shoreline, sandline dredging at the north shore of the beach at Rockaway there. These are 30-ton railcars, 500 a month. That's 500 tons of gravel and sand a day they're taking out of the north end of Rockaway Beach. This is affecting what's going on in our city right now. You know, we have a, we have a mining problem, more than we have some sort of natural act of God here. They've taken all the sand out that was in front of Rockaway, in front of the -- they've taken the sand away. You need to call your title company, provide them a copy of this report. I'll hand these out and have your title company advocate to return a portion of any profits from this project to you. Again, your title company has a lot of lawyers. They'll, you send them the report, they'll look it up, they'll take care of it for you. You won't have to lift a finger. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. All right. Elaine McKean, followed by Jennifer Sloan, followed by Marge Davis. Hi.
I know the process that you're going through is extremely difficult, and I, oh, sorry, difficult process for these folks. And I know that you listen very carefully and you try the best you can to respond to us. I've sat in these meetings before, and I really appreciate it. So what I want to hear are your thoughts on what the city gets from this process. Talk about it amongst yourselves and figure out, what is it that we get in return? I also want to say, you represent us. Look at all of us that have been here throughout the night and people who are online waiting. Most of them are against this project. If you represent us, you should be against this process, this project as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Jennifer, and then Marge.
Hello. I didn't come here intending to speak, but hearing all of this, I felt like I might have something else to add. I actually walked through the quarry to get here tonight. I live in Rockaway Beach. I walk there between three and seven days a week. I've seen, there's so many animals that I've seen, you know, it's, I don't know how having all these trucks go through and potentially killing, destroying habitat for the animals that have already retaken the quarry themselves. Like, where are they going to go? Like, they're going to be smashed, destroyed, their homes are going to be gone, and how are they going to come back? Like, we have to kill things to make this other idealized version of what we think should be there? I haven't heard anybody talk about the California long-tailed weasel yet, or the rabbit. There are some fans. You know, I've seen the California garter snake, or I guess the San Francisco garter snake. I've seen coyote, the coyotes live there. Like, they're playing, you know, if you're quiet and you watch them, that's their home too. And actually, my husband and I moved here in early 2011 as a result of going on a walk through the quarry. We're like, wow, this is beautiful. You know what? We could maybe even live here. Like, we would love to live here. So during all of this stuff, is there going to be access? Because like, this is part of the thing that I do every day. It's actually the fitness regimen that's worked out for my knees that are both arthritic. Like, I've got this perfect loop that I can do that like, doesn't blow my knees up, closes all my rings, you know, and it's, it's part of my fitness plan is walking through this thing. And I've met so many wonderful people. Like, I've met neighbors, dogs, animals, like, well, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Marge, you're up.
So I might have to talk fast, which I'm pretty good at, but because as usual, I've changed my mind about some things. But first, good evening. I can't imagine trying to wade through all of that in three days. But I wanted to thank Samantha, you're, or, I'm sorry, Commissioner Hauser, your overarching original question really kind of restored my faith in the process. Commissioner Ferguson, thank you for calling it what it is. A for-profit soil disposal, calling it a reclamation plan is the lipstick on the pig. But I also wanted to share a couple of things from Title IX, Section Two, on, from our own city ordinances about surface mining reclamation, and I'm going to try and read them fast. I know you guys all probably are familiar with this, but I wanted other people to know about it too. It talks about the Planning Commission shall hold at least one public hearing prior to taking action on proposed quarry use permit. Thank you, this is our second one. At the conclusion of the investigation, in the public hearing, the Planning Commission shall make the necessary findings and determine whether or not the surface mine and reclamation plan, or proposed surface mine and reclamation plan, is, will be, or may be likely to become a public nuisance, or will be dangerous or detrimental to the public peace, and that's P-E-A-C-E, health, safety, and general welfare. And from Section 9-2.07, reclamation plans, the Planning Commission may approve a reclamation plan only when making all of the following findings, and the number one finding is, the reclamation plan conforms fully with the provisions of this chapter. And finally, from Section 9-2.08, the Planning Commission may approve, conditionally approve, or deny the quarry use permit. And yes, maybe a reclamation needs to be done. I so appreciate you recognizing that it can be done in a less impactful way that doesn't make millions of dollars for a handful of people off the lives and backs of the people of this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Marge. All right. I am going to read through the names of people that I called out. If you are here, just stand up and come to the microphone. Rick Nigera, Wesley Rich, Jan Turner, Michael Turner, Danny Estrella, Susan DeJordaine, Dan Hillman, or Ashley Gibson, if you are here, this is your opportunity to speak. Okay. With that, I think we're going to take a five-minute recess, and when we come back, we will go to Zoom comment. Thank you, everybody. It's 9:46, that will be 9:51 when we come back. It's 9:46. That will be 9:51 when we come back. And when staff announces your phone number to press *6 to unmute. If you're on Zoom, you can press the raise hand function. And then we request that you state your full name at the start of your comment. And with that, how many... Or you can just go ahead and... We currently have 10 raised hands, and our first caller is William L. William, you may unmute yourself.
Good evening. This is William Leo Leon calling. First, I wanted to say that I am not in favor of approval or adoption of the proposed development plan or certification of the final EIR. I am in favor of what the Coastal Commission wrote in regards to providing a robust alternatives analysis. I think especially take a deeper look at the reduced fill, no fill alternatives. And, you know, there's a lot I'm not going to say because it's been said already. But what you can do, I served eight years on the planning commission as a chair and planning commissioner. Now, what we have done, if we have certain time limits where files are so large, you can't just get through it. You can agree to continue to a date. So to give a member, a commissioner sufficient time to go through all of the material to feel comfortable that you're making a good decision. And you can ask for findings for denial. If you can't deny tonight because there's no findings, direct staff to come back with findings for denial when you meet again. And finally, I just wanted to say that this is a very complex issue, and it deserves all the time and attention that you can give it to make that really the best decision you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Leo. Our next caller is Irene L. Irene, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, my name's Irene Lee. I'm from Manor. I'd want to point out a few things about the proposed infill. The problem I see is that is you have the potential hazardous material. And when you do get this done, then you have a bigger potential of slope instability, soil erosion. And what about when we get, let's say, earthquakes or tsunami? Then you have, the biggest thing is that we have liquid fraction issue in which all the soil become like wet, quicksand. And the runoff and the contaminant could be going all over to destroy the surrounding area and ocean and beaches. Now, I like, I do like Commissioner earlier about a zero infill alternative and just like moving a little dirt around the existing soil to minimize the existing habitat. So I'm hoping that you will disapprove of this plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Irene. Our next caller is Lori. Lori, you may unmute yourself.
Good evening. My name is Lori Yap. I also oppose importing soil from other locations to fill in the quarry for many of the same reasons already stated by others. An additional point regarding the truck traffic concerns. Even if the applicant does not feel there will be much of an increase in traffic with approximately 146 trucks a day with the 161 cap. And even if traffic is not dead stopped at times, I can picture vehicles constantly darting in and out of lanes to go around these trucks. As I'm fairly confident that the majority of vehicles will not want to drive behind one of these trucks traveling down the roadway. Can you just imagine some of the heartbreaking accidents that will most likely occur? I urge you to reject the quarry reclamation plan being proposed this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Our next caller is Lori C. Lori, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Lori Cholmido, and I live in Park Pacifica. While I'm very concerned about the potential traffic issue, which would be a nightmare, I am even more concerned about the soil testing that will only be performed after the soil is delivered. The soil that we have no idea where it is from or what it contains. And we all know there's plenty of areas around that would like to get rid of soil that is contaminated. This means that this soil would not be tested until residents, people that recreate, and the surrounding environment, including wildlife, have been exposed to potential contamination. What about the runoff? While the applicant made reference to current runoff, which may or may not exist, it is from the natural environment. Once the soil is found to be contaminated, who pays for its removal and impacts? I want to thank the earlier speakers for reminding me that this is also ancestral land, including where some rest. I would be appalled if someone proposed that someone impact where my ancestors lay, and I would not have been as composed. While the applicant cited both state and federal departments, let me remind everyone what government agencies have approved. They approved the cleanup of Hunter Point Soil, where there is now a very elevated instance of cancer and other illnesses. They also just approved, well, recently approved, the removal of a dam at the Klamath River in Northern California that subsequently has killed over 800,000 fish. With that, I would like to ask the commission to vote no on the proposal. As a last comment, I would also like to ask city staff, whom the city residents pay, to be more respectful of the commission and their responsibility to Pacifica residents, and less worried about giving irreverent legal responses to valid questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Next speaker, please. Our next speaker is Erica D. Erica, you may unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Erica, now you look like you're on mute.
There we go. I'm sorry.
Okay, now we can hear you. Yes, we can.
I chose to speak to add to the numbers voicing their displeasure with this project. I'm a moderate when it comes to development. I helped grow and plant the plants next to the main walkway in the quarry, but I did vote for one of the development plans in the past that was rejected. So I'm a moderate that way. One thing that I haven't heard about is whether anyone has investigated the competence of the Bayland Soil Pacifica LLC to do this work. Clearly, given the name, the company was formed specifically to do this project. Looking up their corporate information online, we can find that their registered address is in San Leandro and the mailing address is in Oakland. Oakland is also where the agent of the corporation, Maxwell David Burl, is located. I looked him up on LinkedIn and made sure that it was the same Maxwell David Burl, and it is. When looking at his professional profile, it says that he is, quote, "Chief of Staff" at Pipe and Plant Solutions in Oakland, and that he is experienced admissions manager with a demonstrated history of working in the e-learning industry. But he has worked at Pipe and Plant Solutions for the past four years, and he's mainly worked in sales. So I looked at the history of Pipe and Plant Solutions. I looked that up. It turns out that they were one of the companies that the San Francisco went down with the bribery scheme with the San Francisco Public Works debacle. Debacle, excuse me. And this company's main purpose is inspecting and cleaning wastewater infrastructure. I just learned this information now, and I can provide it to the commissioners after the meeting if you would like. But if this company is affiliated with a company that can no longer do work with the city of San Francisco because of corruption, they certainly shouldn't be allowed to do business with Pacifica. How do we know they have the technical ability to even pull off such a job that's very large, even with all of the clear problems that go along with it? So I ask, for the sake of the people of Pacifica, please don't take this risk, and please reject this application. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Our next raised hand is Remy T. Remy, you may unmute yourself.
Hello, it's Remy Tan. Architect and resident of Edgemar Pacific Manor. I'm very concerned about this proposal to fill up the big hole in the quarry that was excavated over many years ago. And, I mean, that should have been done years and years ago before Pacifica was populated. But I guess they didn't have the environmental laws back then. But now, when Pacifica is fully populated, it doesn't make sense to fill that up. With the amount of trucks that are going, it's going to go down the hill on Highway 1, they're going to have to use engine braking to negotiate the steep grade safely. And that's really noisy, and that's going to add more... And that's really noisy and that's going to add more diesel pollution to the residents of Edgemar Pacific Manor over a period of three to four years. And I believe the EIR does not even account for the, the adverse health and noise effects of, of that. Looking at the plan, I think what the developer really wants to do is to elevate the hotel rooms so they, they can get an ocean view, which would increase, you know, the value of the rental rates on, on the hotel room. But they, they can do that without filling in the, filling in the, you know, the bowl. If they built, you know, a multi-story car park with a, with, you know, a bunch of conference rooms below, they could raise the building, you know, high, high enough that the rooms are, you know, above the lip of the bowl and can see the ocean. And that would have the added benefit of Pacifica finally having some decent conference and community space for larger assemblies, which we, we don't have right now. I think our largest auditorium is over at Terranova. It's only 400 seats. This allows us to have a much larger conference venue. This would attract more visitors and conference folks to, to Pacifica, which would add to their transit occupancy tax as well as, you know, help the restaurant businesses. So the Planning Commission would just need to maybe grant an extra height limit, maybe, you know.
Remy, please wrap it up, okay?
So it, you know, a fairly simple solution and it would, you know, you know, not, it would be a win-win situation. It wouldn't, it would not allow, you know, all this dirt to come to Pacifica and all the problems that have been said forthwith. Thank you.
Thank you, Remy. Next speaker, please.
Our next raised hand is Kurt K. Kurt, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, this is Kurt Keast from Pacifica. I was looking at what was the answer if the city inherited this project, perhaps through bankruptcy of Baylands. What would we do? We would follow SMRA and use the least fill possible to satisfy SMRA's requirements for safety and then revegetate with natives and, and to place trails. We would also require a third-party monitoring of all incoming fill. We should require no less of this applicant. Any amount of fill more than this limited amount is a huge burden on the City of Pacifica. The Planning Commission should deny the existing application as a gross overreach of what is required, or they should approve with the condition that it be reworked for the least fill compatible with SMRA's safety. The applicants have actually already shown us the way. The height of the fill against the stable limestone rock face was originally set arbitrarily by them at 150 feet elevation and now has been simply moved down the rock face to 135 feet elevation. Why not take it all the way down to the base of the stable rock face at approximately 75 feet elevation? Use a two-to-one contour filling downslope from the steep unstable south and western rim, making it stable and safe. And you could do that with less than 25% of the fill originally proposed. All SMRA criteria would be met and the city would be saved three years of construction traffic, the noise, the dust, and the loss of the use of its most-used public trail. The only acceptable outcome is to require the least fill possible to meet SMRA. Demand quarry light, less filling. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Next speaker, please.
Our next raised hand is Summer L. Summer, you may unmute yourself.
Hi there. Sorry, we don't have a timer on this Zoom, so I'll just make this as short as possible and that's why probably people are going over. I wanted to state again, this is unceded Rama Tish land and that descendants should be consulted. And thank you Chair Hauser for a commanding opening comment and question, which was the absence of analysis for zero fill, a plan that was approved in the past. My understanding is an EIR should study less environmentally impactful alternatives and you all would be on solid ground tonight to not approve the EIR and avoid losing another lawsuit. Also, my understanding is the Coastal Commission, who luckily has a say, stated they want analysis of lesser environmentally damaging alternatives. As an aside, for those of us who live here, we know the area where the few tragic accidents have happened is not where the dumping would take place and would not be made safer by this plan. I also want to say that we can look to the calamities that occur regularly with dump trucks on 92 going into the Ox Mountain landfill in Halfman Bay and know what this would look like. I want to echo the former Planning Commissioner Rich Campbell that you Commissioners are on solid ground to reject this project when the staff report fails to offer evidence that this landfill would do what the applicant wants it to do. Please don't continue this to another hearing and waste more time and energy. You have good grounds to just reject this process, project and the EIR tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Summer. And it may be, it may be a good idea to give someone their one-minute warning if we can, if in fact it's hard to track on Zoom. That, that being said, we also didn't do that in the audience here, so, but I think it would be helpful.
Our next raised hand is Dinah V. Dinah, you may unmute yourself.
Hello there. I hope you can hear me. I'm calling from the East Coast and it's about 1:15 a.m. out here. I want to thank all of you for all of your time and attention and consideration and especially all my fellow Pacificans who have spoken tonight. I urge you also to reject this plan outright. And if you want to go back and I, and to the question Commissioner Hauser raised about how much fill is really needed, the answer is imported fill zero. And if you want to go back in history, please go back to the original plan filed by this owner for this project, which was, I believe, in 2016 or thereabouts, if I recall correctly. The original plan, and I'm going to guess maybe in 2017, did not call for imported fill. In other words, the current owner submitted an application that did not require imported fill. The imported fill came into this process when Bayland Soil got involved. And the reason for that, I think we've all know, is that that is their business. They haul soil and that's how they make their money. And I would take a very large shaker of salt with the claim that it's a non-starter to consider another option. So thank you again for your time. I also submitted extensive written comments about the inadequacies and the legal inadequacy of the EIR. I'm not going to go into that now, but I do trust and hope that you will read them. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Dinah. Next speaker, please.
Our next raised hand is Clara N.
Hi, just wanted to thank the Commission for, for hearing, hearing all the comments tonight. I know it's been long. I'll keep this brief. You know, I think this plan has been lauded as an improvement in the safety of the quarry, but there's really no data to support that the quarry is unsafe. And there have been accidents in the area, but they're all on the ocean-facing side, which is not able to be regraded. And so the, the slopes that exist in the quarry are, you know, no steeper than those. And we haven't had any accidents in the quarry. They're all people trying to ogle the ocean, which will continue no matter what slopes or faces exist in this region. So I, I think there is a pretty limited amount of data to support that this is going to improve public safety. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next raised hand is Nikli. Nikli, you can unmute yourself.
Hi there and thank you so much for taking my question. Firstly, I wanted to say, you know, as I sit back and watch this, I can't help but think of, you know, movies that have been based on real-life events like Darkwater or the Aaron Brockovich case. And while it might be a stretch, I think this is one of those positions where we're often reminded to think globally but act locally. So Commissioner Hauser and Commissioner Ferguson, I really applaud you for the questions that you asked today and the transparency that you provided. And I think that's what we need to focus on. Furthermore, I think that, you know, we've heard other people state that Baylands Corporation is one that has been accused and convicted of bribery. And for that reason, I think we should take a very, very close look at the reports that they are providing and ask, should we trust them? You know, reputation is built over 10 years but can be broken in five minutes. Why would we trust a company that we've already has shown they should not be trusted? With that, I leave the rest to you, but I really, I really hope you do listen to your constituents here, who majority are saying this is not the right move for Pacifica. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next raised hand is Philip. Philip, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, Commissioners. There's no need to import hundreds of thousands of tons of soil. It can be done with cut and fill onsite without blasting according to the previous plan. I was actually shocked that the Commission asked the Bay shore, Bay soils representative about alternatives that they are not qualified to answer. They are only a toxic soil hauler, not environmental reclamation planners. We need an unbiased evaluation of the best alternative without importing contaminated soil, which could potentially bring in foreign pathogens. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next raised hand is Anne. Anne, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Anne Suma. I am a resident of Valamar. I was there earlier with my baby son. My baby son was playing in the quarry today. We were just walking through it. That's one of our daily walks to the beach. It's just heartbreaking to hear everybody. It's clear that the residents of Pacifica feel very strongly against this. I appreciate everybody's comments before. I was trying to not be too emotional, but I walk past Valamar School. Do you know the visibility of any trucks coming down Reyna Del Mar? Have you ever been on Reyna Del Mar and seen a truck take the wrong way and just get stuck at the end of our street and try and make it out of there? The police department has to come. They have to support. The visibility is atrocious on just a suburban truck. The fact that we make this walk and my son, I feel comfortable with him playing in, you know, the little gardens and waving to the dogs and to everybody walking on that path. I don't know if I would ever want my son or my future children to ever be in that area with questionable soil, to be crawling around and just to have a different quality of life just with having just the trucks coming through. The soil, like we saw five garter snakes, we see like different plants and birds and people and just the entire community will be affected if you approve this. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Our final raised hand is Sherry C. Sherry, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Sherry Chan. I was at all, thank you Commissioners for all your hard work. I was at all five hours of, of the June 2023 meeting and congratulations Commissioner Burman too. And I heard loud and clear the Planning Commissioners' request for information regarding that local option. I'm staff in another public agency and I can just let you know, this is not normal that staff would just ignore the Commissioners' request like this. So you've heard a number of your neighbors just, you know, asking to stand strong and, you know, and support the mandate that you've been given by your neighbors and your fellow citizens to just say no. Although the representatives from Bayland Soil certainly assert that this land is unsafe and that the state wants somehow take over state control, I'm quoting the June 13 State Mining and Geology Board Executive Director's Report. And as Commissioners Campbell already said, there is no, there is no safety issue here. So you can take, you know, Bayland Soil's assertion that the state's going to take over control of this as the biggie man or the report itself. I've already submitted written comments and thank you so much for all your hard work and representing all of us here in Pacifica. Good night.
Thank you, Sherry.
We have a few more raised hands. Anne, you may unmute yourself.
That was just a mistake. I had already spoken.
Our next raised hand is Barb K. Barb, you may unmute yourself.
Hi, I'm Barb Capreis. I live in Halfman Bay, not Pacifica, so I'll keep it quick. I'm against this proposal. I agree with what's been said before that they definitely should have done tribal consultation. You know, EIRs are supposed to talk about the impacts to cultural resources and I really can't find that here. I think it's a little messed up to get out of tribal consultation due to like a technicality that no contact was listed under like AB 52. And it all takes is one Google search to find the Association of Rama Tish Shaloni. So it's really not that hard. For the plan itself, the stormwater pollution testing is only going to be done like every like four or so months. And there's so much damage that can be done in that time. I think it needs to be done more regularly than that. I also don't think that a four-to-one mitigation ratio is enough to offset the impact to the wetland and the broader impacts to the environment. Bringing in untested soils is not only dangerous for all the reasons mentioned before, but it'll also bring a whole non-native seed bank. There are plenty of invasive species that have seeds that go dormant for years and it's super expensive to get rid of it. I've seen projects that cost millions of dollars because there's been a non-native seed bank established. And as a reminder, we have about 40 threatened and endangered species in this county. And so I think a four-to-one mitigation ratio is just not enough for the damage that could be done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next raised hand is Dani M. Dani, you may unmute yourself.
Hello, Commission, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, the California Public Resource Code for Reclamation defines reclamation as a process land treatment that minimizes effects to an ecosystem such as pollution. Would 141 trucks per day be more or less pollution? It's also not supposed to create any danger to health and safety. Again, would over 141 trucks rolling down Highway One per day be more or less safety for Pacifica? You can argue any point with your lawyers, EIR's requirements, and you can typically sway someone to swear that. The bottom line is applicable scale. Anyone who's lived here knows four years means six. And 161 trucks usually means about 200.
One minute.
Despite your charts, fancy graphs, attorneys, everyone lives here, we all see traffic grow that you cannot see on the chart. We see the pollution, we see overdevelopment that cannot be quantified on some fancy chart. None of the developers are local to this site. They don't live here. Their only vested interest is money. An EIR requires adequacy, completeness, and a good faith effort at full disclosure. At what point do you think this company would provide a good faith effort? Let's look at the actions of this company and not its intentions. They are bad for the people of Pacifica and bad for this community. I think you should reject this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Dani. I don't believe we have more raised hands, so at this point I will invite the applicant back up for three minutes of rebuttal. And I would remind everyone to please, again, be respectful and specifically, let's not interrupt. Mr. Gilmoreton.
Thank you Chair Hauser. Thank you Commissioners. Thank you to the public and all the passionate comments that we've heard this evening. It's not easy being up here. I have been working at this for years and I genuinely believe this is a good project. I wouldn't do this project if I felt otherwise. I keep hearing tonight about a lot of things, but I think I'll just focus on a few. First is this claim that we will be creating a toxic waste site. Nothing could be further from the truth. We require comprehensive testing for the We require comprehensive testing for the material to even be accepted to be onsite and that happens well in advance of the material showing up onsite. And the quality of the material that's part of our acceptance criteria is equal to what's known as residential reuse values, which is a fancy way of saying that it's clean enough to go in your backyard. And all you have to do is look at the plan to understand that. Last, I'll just say that with respect to soil testing and its quality is that we provided a comprehensive way for the city to not take us just by our word, to not trust us just by our monthly seminals that we've agreed to provide, but to also conduct its own testing with any company they so choose at our cost, not the city's cost. I stand by the design of this project. I believe in this project. The other thing I'll just say is that I'd be happy to answer more questions with respect to the zero fill plan and perhaps we'll have some of my team members able to answer some of your specific questions and just want to say thank you and I appreciate the time and hard work that you've put into this. And I don't know if in the last minute, anyone else wants to mention anything?
Chair Hauser, members of the Planning Commission, I'm Alicia Guerra with Buckholzer Attorney for the applicant here. I wanted to address two comments regarding the cultural resources studies that were done on the site. Extensive subsurface investigations were performed on the site, both historically, but then also recently. And those studies were submitted not only to the city, but also to the state and federal agencies, including the state historic resources, the state historic preservation officer and that office. And the testing that was done involved 48 shovel pits or shovels that were used as augers to define the location of any resources and no resources have been identified. We also have extensive mitigation included in the project should something occur during the fill activities, but there are no resources present on the site. I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia. With that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the Commission for questions. In deliberation, I want to thank everybody for the extraordinary amount of time and effort and work and that, I mean, for everybody who has spent time on this. I think it's, you know, to Commissioner Ferguson's point, this was a lot. I read every page and I rewatched almost all of our five-hour meeting from June. And I do feel like there were so many questions that were asked where information was missing. And I have a hard time, you know, asking staff to analyze information that they do not have. I want to kind of re-ask two things. I mean, there were a lot of, I mean, there were hundreds of questions from our public and I think we all heard you. There was a very informative information from the applicant and we heard you. And what I would like to do is re-ask two of those questions. And the first one, Director Murdock, is for you. I think it's really important, and this came up in June as well, but I think it's really important to explain the process behind this. Why is this coming before the city? Who is the applicant here? I'd like to provide an opportunity for you to comment on that.
Thank you, Chair. So to start with, you know, why are we talking about quarry reclamation? That is because based on our records and based on those of the relevant state agency, the Division of Mine Reclamation, the quarry, though it ceased quarry operations, is not closed and reclaimed. And so as we've explained before and described in the staff report and elsewhere, reclamation is required by state law and the Pacifica Municipal Code, acknowledging that reclamation can be accomplished in different ways, which has been discussed today. But the applicant has come forward on behalf of the property owner who has the obligation to ensure reclamation occurs, to propose a quarry reclamation plan, which the city is obligated to process, to review, to analyze in relation to the findings that are required, and then the staff to make a recommendation and the Planning Commission to take an action based on the evidence. In terms of the relationship between the city and this applicant, it's important to clarify, the city is not in business with or partnering with this applicant. This is private property. The quarry is a privately owned site and the reclamation needs to be completed as part of that private property owner's obligations. The city in this case is the regulator. We are not in business with the quarry reclamation applicant or have any other financial arrangement other than the costs for processing the reclamation plan through the city's process. And so I think that's a helpful distinction. We don't have the opportunity to choose someone else, you know, to undertake the reclamation as some have suggested. We're obligated under the law to process this application and to give due process to the applicant to have a fair hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Director Murdock. The other question that came up that is a point of confusion for me, and I think it's important that we have the opportunity to answer it here or to at least say that we need to collect more information, but I am going to put it into the category of like we don't have a lot, like there's a lot of information that we need that we don't have is the AB 52 consultation. So every council meeting, and you know, we don't read it, maybe we should, but every council meeting, the mayor reads our land acknowledgement, which says, "We affirm the Ramatishaloni sovereign rights as first people and wish to pay our respects to the ancestors, elders, and relatives of the Ramatishaloni people." That's the last sentence, a much longer statement. And considering that, you know, the chairman of the tribe came tonight and has raised this point, but we also have the applicant saying that they've done archaeological testing, again, this is one where I think, you know, maybe the answer is we can't, we don't know the answer tonight, but I would like to know if this is something that needs analysis or what do we do with this information?
So as it relates to AB 52 consultation, the city has followed the process and the requirements set forth in the law, notably providing a tribal consultation opportunity to any tribe that has requested that, that's eligible to request AB 52 consultation under the law. And that includes tribes that are registered with the Native American Heritage Commission, which the Ramatishaloni are not. And so they're not registered and they also did not request tribal consultation because there was no opportunity to provide them that offer because they are not registered as an eligible tribe in that regard. What the tribe can do and has done tonight and in the prior hearing is participate in the process. They can comment on the environmental document, you know, during the draft EIR process. They can comment in the hearing process. The applicant can choose to engage with the tribe, to solicit their input and incorporate it in whatever way they see appropriate. But the city has complied with the requirements of the law and cannot choose to create a new process midstream, you know, for tribal consultation that does not follow the requirements of the law.
Okay. I'm going to say one more thing and then I'm going to open it up to the rest of the Commission for questions and thoughts. But the last thing that I'm going to say is kind of a restatement of the first thing that I said, which is in June, it was not clear to me that the past plan was a move of native soil within the quarry. There was a community member who yesterday sent us a 2017 plan from the current property owner with the same geotechnical engineer as tonight's geotechnical engineer, saying there was also a balanced reclamation with like 100,000 cubic yards moving within the quarry. And then we have the applicant saying something very different without having this like answer to our question. We have hundreds, if not thousands, of pages that the Commission is trying to sift through. We have hundreds of pages of new community comments that were given to staff and the Commission today. We have letters from the applicant that were given to us this weekend and it sounds like, you know, within, like, I don't know when you guys got them, but there's a lot of new stuff and I don't think that staff has been given an adequate opportunity and I don't think we've been given an adequate opportunity. And I'm frustrated that I don't have answers to very straightforward questions that we asked. I also have talked to pro-development geotechnical engineers about this plan and I'm concerned about usability. I'm concerned about creating pockets of different types of fill in the topsoil, gravel next to silt, next to clay. That potentially, you know, puts usability at risk, which is the ultimate goal here. So without that analysis, I feel very much ill at ease. You know, I certainly am not in a position to make a decision tonight personally. So that's all I'm going to say. I appreciate you guys letting me go first and let's open it up to anyone who has a question.
Quick question.
Please speak into your microphone.
What happens if we say no for the city attorney?
If the Planning Commission ultimately denies the project, we would need to prepare the appropriate documents, which are not in the packet tonight, and it would be appealable to the city council as well. And then possibly appealable also to the state, to DMR.
For Christian, do you feel like you need more time to be able to answer some of Chair Hauser's questions?
I think I can acknowledge that there's a significant amount of information that was presented to the Planning Commission and that a lot of new information has come in since the packet was published and there has not been a lot of time to thoughtfully consider it. I think some additional time to make sure we've answered the relevant questions with the information we have and that the comments have not raised new issues that have not been addressed would be helpful. But really, that's a question for the Commission related to its decision-making, whether it has had an opportunity to fully consider the information and weigh the evidence relative to the required findings and if more time is needed for you to do that.
Would staff be in favor of a continuance as opposed to a decision up or down in light of perhaps benefiting from some more time?
Well, as Assistant City Attorney Murphy indicated, the only action that's prepared and supported for the Commission to take tonight would be an approval action. And I don't know that the Commission is there yet as a body. And so what we would need to do in any case is come back at a subsequent meeting, having analyzed perhaps a different course of action for the Commission to consider. Similarly, we, I think, need to answer more questions that you have and maybe work with the applicant further to try to get answers to some of those questions, which would take some time to do.
I will have more later, but I would like others to have an opportunity to say some.
Oh, Commissioner Berman, I see your hand raised and I'm sorry if it's been raised for a while. It's, your hand raise is behind my computer screen.
No worries. Thank you, Chair Hauser, and it has not been raised for very long. I am extremely appreciative of everyone's time, the community, the applicant, staff, and fellow Commissioners. I share the sentiment of fellow Commissioners that was mentioned earlier in this meeting. My primary question when we met back in June was, could we have a more balanced site? And at that time, I know we did know, we were aware of the reclamation plan back from, back in the 90s. But recently, I reviewed the reclamation plan that was provided by a member of the public from 2017. So there's two reclamation plans that have more consideration to balancing the site. Granted, not necessarily completely balanced, but effectively, my biggest request in the last meeting was to see how much soil could be reused on the site. And I understand now that there would be other impacts of noise and whatever associated with effectively mining the quarry again to cut down grading and then reuse it for the fill to get more balance. However, now that leads me to questioning, okay, if that is the means to get to a better balanced site, then what are the quantified impacts of that approach? We don't have an EIR that studied that approach, but I feel like I can't make a decision until understanding all the options. And it sounds like the Coastal Commission has a similar recommendation, that there needs to be robust analysis and consideration of different scenarios, which I agree with. And I'd like to see, I was, to be frank, I was a little frustrated to review as much as I could of the 2,000-page document, trying to find where there was a quantifiable amount of reused soil that would be used on the quarry. So like, I understood it wasn't going to be the full 1 million cubic yards of import that's going to be needed would be somehow magically transformed into balance, but I expected something a little better than just reducing to in the 800 cubic yard, 800,000 cubic yard range. But at the same time, I didn't see any quantified number that said, "We are going to remove this amount of soil from," or, you know, limestone, whatever it is. We're going to remove this amount from over here and we're going to use it over there. And over the past year, while we've been waiting for this new reclamation plan, I was, I mean, I've done earthwork in my profession. I've been thinking about, okay, what could we do? What would be the impact of lowering the ridge line? Sure, some visual impacts, but that's not in the view of very many homes, but that isn't what was presented in front of us. So it was a little frustrating to like feel like we're back at the beginning. Sorry that this is long-winded, but ultimately, I don't think I can make a decision tonight without at least understanding the impacts of having a more balanced site because there's some reluctance to getting to that and I'm not seeing objectively why we can't get to that. So I don't know if additional analysis needs to be inserted to the EIR, like noise. I just, I feel like I don't have all the facts to fully analyze that and make a decision. I do have other comments, but they are much more of, they, I'd say they're smaller.
Yeah.
Not necessarily small, but this is my main item and so that's what I have to say for now.
Yeah, and that was not long-winded at all. I think, you know, I concur with you wholly, Commissioner Berman. We don't really know the impacts of any of the three plans that, you know, are floating around. We just know that one is, you know, almost 900,000 cubic yards of foreign soil and two are zero. And, you know, the 1998 reclamation plan, which did undergo CEQA, not an EIR, I mean, what's confusing to me is that the information that you just asked for is in that, you know, like this is where we'd move it from to here. And I agree with you that I didn't see that in this one, which is so much longer. It's like, where is that? I also don't think blasting is a requirement of this plan. It just talks about it as a standard geotechnical practice and there's no ripability analysis done. It just says if hard pockets are encountered, right? So again, this one's not really studied fully either. Maybe it is, maybe it's not, but I can't imagine that we can just say the 1998 one said blasting because it doesn't, right? So we need, we need more information. We need real information and we need it from, you know, engineers who are experts. Commissioner Liel or Vice Chair Liel or Commissioner, I almost called you Ferguson. It's late, I'm getting tired. Commissioner Godwin?
I'll go first. So one thing that came up tonight- So one thing that came up tonight by a couple of commenters, and I want to ask some questions around, was around what's in it for Pacifica? So what's in it for the residents if we move forward with this? So if we, even with a minimal fill option, what does that mean for the residents? Okay, it means a reclaimed mine, but what does that really mean for Pacifica residents? So my questions, and the specifics of my questions are around the economic impact here. I think probably the initial thought is, some of the truck drivers might buy lunch, dinner, breakfast, but then the question is, where would they park those trucks? So I think that's kind of, not only just minimal, but probably not likely, given the route they'll take, which will be mainly highway. And then my other questions are around, well, revenue generated from this project. It also came up tonight, that kind of, what's the key driver of this project, right? Is it money for fill, basically? So what does that look like from a sales tax perspective? Is there any impact, economic impact on Pacifica in a positive manner for this project, so that we can talk about how it's going to improve our schools or improve other areas by having this project in town? So that's one question, is, are there any sales tax or other local tax implications that will raise our tax base? And then the second, which kind of gets to that question too, but given that this parcel will be improved upon, will it be subjected to being reassessed from a property tax perspective, which would then ideally equate into local taxes improving too? So the economic impact questions, and I'm not sure if we have answers tonight there, which is fine, but those are the questions that I have, so that we can ideally respond to some of the public comments around what's in it for Pacifica residents. And then my other comment is around, going back to the, just the fill, it's, we talked about a couple of options. So one is the, that's been presented, and also, I think, in discussion, so the zero, zero fill option, but then also the zero imported fill option, which I see those as two different plans that's been discussed. But then also, what's bothered me a little bit, and again, long documents, maybe I missed it, but the minimal fill option, actually putting a number on that. I haven't seen a number. If there is a number on that option, please tell me the page count, page number in the packet. But we have a current plan that's been presented with a number, but then a minimal fill, which kind of describes the same thing, which, without a number. So I think for the public as well as for us, having a relation there. My last point before we quiet is, it also bothers me a little bit that all of a sudden we got a 10% reduction in fill in the plan since last summer. I know there's reasons why it changes in plans, but also, like, why stop at 10? Could it be reduced even more with additional changes to the plan? So that doesn't sit entirely well with me, given the feedback. So I do think studying the other options is, I think would be the best path forward, especially around kind of the, not only the public comment we got tonight, but also the discussion up here. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions as well, but I largely echo my fellow commissioners' view, as I don't feel like I have enough information tonight to make a decision. Civil engineering isn't my field, but I know in the engineering work I have done, we usually identify to the clients, the primary design decisions as we saw them when we do a project. And then once we identify what those are, I mean, I'm guessing in this case, you're talking about the amount of cut, the amount of fill, what is, what is the grading amount? Do you do grading three to one or more, shallow slopes, sort of those things? And, you know, identify how you reach the conclusions that this is a really good project alternative versus maybe a few others. And even once you think you're zeroing in on a project alternative, you do some sensitivity analysis around each of those variables and say, what if I increase this 10% or 20% or 15%? Kind of like Commissioner Liel was alluding to. I didn't see much of that in the package, and I think it would really benefit with a real clear presentation of, we looked at these options, we chose this one because we thought it was dominant in this feature of the, or would generate this benefit. We looked at some sensitivity analysis of how to vary some of the levels of these things, and this is why we concluded we wanted a 17% reduction in fill, or whatever the magic is, or most of it at slope at two to one, some of it at three to one, some at even gentler slopes, like five to one. And I didn't see that packaged in a way that was really usable in three days for me to go through all that. I don't think most of the information's there. And the other point I made earlier, no one's addressed, the issue about seasonality of the trucks and the level of rain and what happens when the kids are out of school. And I know you've offered a cap, which is an interesting approach in avoiding the eight to nine hour, which I think is also quite beneficial. But I really suspect that over the course of the year, the number of trucks arriving at the site isn't going to be the same every day. And I think you ought to think about that if you get a chance to work on this project a little more. And one other thing that struck me, because I'm an old cueing theory guy, among other things, that doing buffering on computer memories, which may not seem immediately important, but the statement that really stuck out in my mind was when someone quoted a number without quantification of, we're going to reduce, or the truck traffic is going to be affected 0.3%. And that may well be true over the five-year period, but what people really care about when they're trying to get to work in the morning is, what's the impact between 8:00 and 8:30, or 7:00 and 7:30, or the most critical 15 minutes, when people, as one of the nurses pointed out, trying to get to the hospital to avoid having a death or dramatic of folks from a stroke? I really think numbers like that are not helpful, and makes it look like you're possibly even glossing over things, when you've got to identify a very small, finite period, and you're going to indicate exactly what the impact is going to be when it's critical, and people are going to notice it. I don't really care whether the traffic changes at 2:00 AM. Don't go out that time much anymore. So, but I do care what goes on between 9:00 and 10:00 if I've got a health issue, or 9:00 and 9:10 if I've got a health issue. So I think you've got to do a more robust analysis on issues like that. And I'll stop there, because I think we're, at least I'm not as comfortable making a decision tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin. Commissioner Ferguson, do you have something to say? And Commissioner Berman, I see your hand up, but I want to give Commissioner Ferguson an opportunity first.
Yeah, I've been wrestling with it. I'm certainly in no position to make a motion for approval or vote in favor of a motion for approval tonight. Where I stand, and I think that Mr. Gilmoreton's in a very tough place here. He's proposing a project. He has the right to propose the project. I think there's a lot of things he did really well with his proposal. I don't envy his position in front of this crowd. At the same time, there's quite a number of required findings that we have to find as a commission, and I find several that I'm not comfortable finding. I would very much have been comfortable rejecting tonight if that was on the table. It sounds like that's not. So I'm not even going to belabor the specifics of many reasons for finding, because we're being sensitive to each other's time now. So that's where I'm at.
Commissioner Berman, I missed Commissioner Wright's late. Do you mind if he goes first? I feel like I've skipped him.
Certainly.
Oh, he's yielding the floor to you.
Well, I didn't want to go back for seconds before everyone had their first, but just two points that I wanted to add. Touching on some of the items that Commissioner Godwin mentioned, the operation of the haul route, sorry, I'm really tired.
It's late. It's late.
So I know that the applicant is saying that they would limit the truck trips, trying to avoid school hours, but I think something that also needs to be considered if we receive an updated reclamation plan to review is avoiding the earlier travel time, like Commissioner Godwin mentioned. There's a lot of people that drive on Highway One, and the Reyna-Delmar intersection is one of the worst in the city, if not the worst, in the morning, and that starts before 8:00 PM. I mean, 8:00 AM, sorry. So I'd consider, I'd like consideration for not having truck trips between 7:00 and 9:00 AM, and also not having truck trips over weekends. I know it's never intended for construction to occur over weekends, but I've been on many projects where schedule is tight, so weekends get authorized through the city for construction. I would not want 146 truck trips on a Saturday that's sunny in Pacifica, because there's, that's when Pacifica has the worst traffic over the weekend when it's good weather. So I wanted to add that, because I think I want to see more information on how that impacts truck trips. And then lastly, I know we're requesting a lot more information, but I want to clarify. I'm not looking for more attachments in the document. I think there's a lot. There's resumes, there's cut sheets, there's the entire SWIP. I kind of felt like I was drowning in documentation, and I don't know, it felt like it led me astray when I was reviewing the agenda, so I don't want to add to that kind of issue. And I don't want it to be a needle in a haystack. I request that maybe there's a little more pointed answers to our questions, and some, I guess, better consolidation of direct answers to our question in the actual staff report, instead of having sift through the attachments. And so that's my last request, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Commissioner Wright?
A question for staff. How do you prioritize a lot of the considerations when you're reviewing one of these applications, like public safety, how does that rate in, versus the applicant's rate, financial viability? There's a ton of considerations, like with the traffic thing. We all know those trucks are going to go slow uphill at Manor, and we all know that that's going to make the traffic, Reyna-Delmar, even worse. We all know that there's an F grade on Caltrans right there at that light, and it's the worst in the Bay Area. You can't get lower than an F grade. How do you prioritize? Can you talk a little bit, when you go through this process, about how you prioritize those considerations before making a recommendation?
I mean, generally, the place that we start is with the general plan. That's the overarching document that's supposed to guide the city's actions on land use matters. In the coastal zone, where applicable, we also sort of do the similar starting point with local coastal land use plan. Then we shift to zoning provisions, where there are specific requirements that might apply to a project. In this case, we have a specific portion of our code dedicated to surface mining and reclamation, but there aren't very many specific standards in that portion of our code. Then we, I think, turn to a more general analysis and consideration of the findings and the evidence that might support making or not making those findings. And then there's some judgment and experience that's required in weighing the evidence relative to what is or isn't, you know, a threat to public health and safety, or, you know, what's a sufficient mitigating action, right, to balance out something that might be concerning? That's where more of the art than the science of our job sometimes comes into play. And I think that's also why the process leads to the planning commission, right? Because a single person, me, for instance, should not be making necessarily all of those kinds of important decisions, and it needs to be, you know, vetted by a body of multiple people, asking great questions, sometimes very challenging questions, and informed by the public as well in this hearing process. And so I think there's a perception that came through in some of the comments, that the staff is telling you what to do, and that you're beholden to me, and I couldn't disagree more with that contention. We do our work. We try to inform it with our judgment and expertise, and guide you through the process and the guardrails on what that process is, and the trade-offs and risks. But ultimately, it's your job as the planning commission to make the decision based on the evidence that's in front of you and the laws that guide and govern your actions. And so hopefully, that was a helpful answer to understand how we prioritize, but there's not always sort of a formula that's followed to get a specific outcome under a specific circumstance. There's some judgment and discretion associated with that.
Well, I think that's helpful in general, in terms of me trying to get my arms around this whole thing. I do have a few more questions, like when it comes down to the financial viability of this. You know, the applicant obviously has put in an application for a very specific plan. We've heard a number of other options, 2016 this, 1986 that. Are we able to condition the applicant's application sufficiently to make it more reflective of one of these older plans? And if we do that, are you getting enough information to be able to do an analysis to tell us, is it viable? And then will that make it financially unviable to do? And if it makes it financially unviable to do, is it unlikely that the mine doesn't get reclaimed? And then what is the consequence of that? I mean, it's this whole big can of worms right now that I'm having a hard time getting my arms around, and I'm looking for more information, more insight, understanding more what the options are. How can staff help me?
Sure. I think, Christian Wright, you hit on a lot of the challenges with this process, right? There may be other ways to reclaim the quarry. There are perhaps attributes of other versions of plans that have been considered in the past that may be desirable in some sense, and maybe aspects of this plan that are desirable in some sense. And how do we balance and blend all of that? It's a very, very difficult task. I think where I would guide you is to look carefully at the findings that are required for approval of these permits, and I would probably start with the quarry use permit as really the central component of this. So much of the other permits are secondary to the quarry use permit. You know, they're triggered by the zoning or needed, you know, as an exception to some zoning standard, but the core reclamation activity that we're bound to consider, right, to comply with state law, those findings really relate most closely to the quarry use permit. And so if there are aspects of those findings that you feel like you haven't seen the evidence to support, that's really where I think we need to focus our inquiry and exploration of this project to get more information, or to conclude we have enough information to say yes or no on the ability to make a finding. And so that's where I would read, as far as how to maybe consider modifications to this project. I don't think it's a fruitful exercise to say, okay, well, we can condition this project to be the 1998 reclamation plan. It's not a very well-reasoned decision or position to take, but if there are reasons that we can't, that you can't make the findings for approval of this plan, and you're gaining insights from the prior plan as to how maybe it could be changed and appears feasible, that's a conversation that's worth having and worth analyzing, in my opinion.
Commissioner Wright, will you humor me for one moment on that point?
Sure.
Because I just, and maybe this is another piece of information we can come back with. And again, I don't, like, there are a lot of plans floating out there. I don't feel like I have enough information to make a decision about any one of them. But I do want to make sure that we don't confuse financial feasibility with being financially beneficial. And the mine that ran and operated for 200 to 300 years... And the mine that ran and operated for 200 to 300 years was the financial benefit. It is, in my opinion, not our responsibility to pick a financially beneficial reclamation plan. It is our responsibility to pick a reclamation plan that contributes to the health and safety of Pacifica and Pacificans. And so it's important to remember that reclamation is an obligation of the property owner for the past benefit of 200 to 300 years of mining, right? And not that this is a standalone project that has to be looked at by itself because it can't be looked at by itself. It's delayed, for sure it's delayed, and that's part of why we absolutely need to push to get our reclamation to happen soon. But it has to be a thoughtful, you know, reclamation that contributes to the public safety and is not looked at in a, in a silo on whether or not it's financially beneficial. So that's my two cents on that.
And an additional point is the, the owner purchased the land with that liability and got a discounted rate for it. So actually already did get some financial benefit from it.
This was a known, yes, this was not a surprise mine, right? Yes, I agree.
Right. So, but here's what my further concern is. It seems like we have a lot of questions. I'm not sure staff knows enough about what are all our questions. So when we come back here again to discuss it, I'm not sure we're going to get much further other than another list of questions. And I'm trying to figure out, well, what kind of direction do they need from us? There's three choices. There's a continuance, a denial, or an approval. I seriously doubt if we're going to approve it tonight. I seriously doubt if we're going to vote against it tonight. That means continuance. What does staff need from us in order to be able to get us closer to a point?
Well...
I have a list.
I would, I would love to, I would love to hear your list. I, I think that Commissioner Berman nailed it on the head, which is this needle in a haystack analogy, like, it shouldn't be, like, this is a fifth, this is the 1998 one. This is a fifth of the size of the 700-page one, but this has more information in it than the 700-page one. And it is not staff's responsibility to sift through 700 pages looking for the answer. So I would ask, you know, you guys have really great engineers and a really good design team working on this and I know that you can help our staff provide the answers that this commission is looking for, right? And that's, it's important because you have to give us the help we need to be able to understand what's going on so that we're not looking in 26 different places without the answer. So I yield to you for your list.
Chair Hauser, sorry, Commissioner Wright, if I could just, on that point, I have a couple of questions on kind of where we go from here before we get to listed questions. Is it possible to have a study session with staff and the applicant where we can potentially better wrap our heads around what's presented in front of us and have a back and forth discussion, kind of like what we're getting at right now? Is that possible?
City Attorney Murphy?
Yes. At this point, as, you know, we have had public hearings on this item and we've heard from the applicant, I, I think it would be difficult to come back to, come back to a study session. But certainly, I think that there are some targeted questions that were raised tonight that staff can look at, and it sounds like there are more as well, that some commissioners have, that staff can look at. And, and in addition, I would, in order to make sure that the project moves forward, I would, I would recommend continuing it to a date certain so that we have a, you know, clear plan for moving forward with the application.
And I, I think that if we do move it forward to a date certain, you know, like, let's, let's do it as expeditiously as possible with also giving us enough time and hopefully you guys enough time. So again, the heavy lift should be with the applicant to give the answers to the questions that staff needs to give the answers to us. So Commissioner Wright?
Another 50,000-foot general sweep of what I'm seeing and hearing tonight is that we have an applicant that is in the soil business. Doesn't sound like the applicant is really in the reclamation business. So there's an expense associated with cut and fill. Doesn't sound like that's what the applicant's business is. So if we're considering other options and other conditions, it's kind of incumbent upon the landowner, not the applicant. So I think there's still a lot more here that's not answered and not asked.
I mean, I think, and City Attorney Murphy, I'll defer to you on this, but my understanding is that the reclamation is the obligation of the property owner and if he needs to pay, I mean, yes, they're not a grading company, they're a soil company, but if he needs to pay them to get it done the proper, safe way, then that's, I mean, then they'll figure that out. Because that's their, I mean, it's not our business, it's their business, right?
Right.
The reclamation is the obligation of the property owner and the application before, before the commission is the, you know, proposed application where there would be the, the fill. So we're looking at it, as staff has been analyzing from that perspective as, as that's the application that's been submitted.
And what I'm hearing very clearly is, is that we're looking for a more balanced approach. And so how do we give staff direction? To analyze what? What conditions?
I think we should provide a list of information we'd like to see and not like a, you know, in the weeds, nitty-gritty. I think there are big questions that we will have that staff can answer. And then I think that there are smaller questions that can be answered on the dais because we have a very prepared applicant. Commissioner Godwin, I know you wanted to have something, you had something to say.
Yeah, it's just a small point. So the way I look at this is we're talking to the prime contractor of somebody's, somebody's job, but they aren't the decision maker. I think it would be very valuable if we had the actual property owner's rep here who could resolve some of these questions. Why did they pick this contractor and their, with their set of skills and their set of deficiencies and their, and, you know, why is this a good plan for them and us? And how do we make this thing work as a project for the contractor, the owner, and the city? And so I don't think we have all the players here that we need to make a decision.
So, I mean, here, here's, what I would like to do is give staff our list, try to keep it as tight as possible. I don't think we, you know, I don't think anyone wants to do this three more times, right? Like, we have, we have to get to something. And so I can, I can tell you what's on my list and I think we can all tell everybody what's on the list. And then I think we need staff to advise what that date certain should be. And I think we need to make sure that that communication is happening. So does somebody want to start? I can start.
I'm happy to start.
Commissioner Wright?
If you're not tired of hearing from me. One thing I'm very interested in knowing is, is a zero-imported fill possible? That's a biggie for me.
Yes, possible.
You know, I heard some talk tonight about third-party monitoring, very interested in that. Want to make sure that the monitoring is very inclusive of all potential contaminants, not just a specific few. I would also like to see us preserve some samples of the testing before. I'd like a tester of the testers to make sure that our tester, who is hopefully working for us, not the soil monitor, is actually doing their job. If, and I'm kind of against it, but if they are bringing in fill, then I want monitoring wells to know what is the condition of the groundwater now and what happens to it. And what happens to it over time after the project is open is over and they're on down the road. Hours, obviously, are a big issue and I don't think that we're all the way done. I've heard about drop-off time. I haven't heard about pickup time. It's also a consideration for me in terms of the health and the safety of the children, in terms of when, if they're crossing the street. I know that, that people at drop-off time use that road to go and do a U-turn and then shoot across the street to bring their kids to school because there's too much traffic to make that right turn. I was really glad to see the applicant address some of the issues like the wind, like the creek testing. I was not happy to see that ocean testing, which was also brought up by us, was not addressed. So I am concerned about that. I also want to see a bond that's going to protect us for what happens five years after they fold up the corporation and then we're stuck with something that we have to reclaim. I want to see that bond live on for a period of time that we're going to be relatively sure that everything is safe. If they're bringing in fill, I still want to reiterate, I prefer wanting to know if there's a zero-trucked-in soil thing. In terms of refilling, refueling of all the equipment, I'd like that done on a tarmac, not on soil. So if any spillage happens, no contamination gets into the soil. In terms of dust mitigation, I want to see stuff using recycled water where possible. And I'd like to understand from the water department, is this something that we can work together on to make happen? Dust control and air monitoring, really glad that they started addressing that. I'd like to know a little bit more about the dust control protocols to make sure. I'd like quarterly reviews, not yearly reviews, because if there's dust blowing on school kids, I don't want a wait here because I don't think that's fair. Fencing. When I was in high school, I was a little terrorist. You know, I would love to go on construction sites and look at stuff and put my nose in where it didn't belong.
I can see that for you.
And, you know, I'm concerned about the safety of the public in the evening hours and what's going to happen particularly on weekends. Maybe security guards are sufficient, I don't know. I'm not an expert in, in these things. Any of the replacement trees for the heritage trees, I'm concerned that they get replaced with trees that enjoy the same protection as the trees that they're replacing. I don't want to see a development project coming here three years later and because the tree that they replaced isn't a heritage tree anymore that they can just cut it down to do their project. So I have concerns about that. In the plan that, that I read, the 86 plan or whatever it was...
96, 98?
Yeah, 98 plan. They had a three-year maintenance of the planted plants there to keep that vegetation going, ongoing for three years at the end of the project. I'd like to see something like that. I did like seeing that they were talking about mapping where they put everything because I think it's important to keep records. So in the event that something does go wrong, and it's been my experience on construction projects, that things always go wrong, it'd be nice to know where everything is so that maybe we can fix it better. I said about, talked about the quarterly reviews already so we can make adjustments. I also would like to see a periodic inspection of any of the equipment that's being used to make sure hydraulic fuel isn't, fluid isn't leaking onto the, to the soil. As always, any kind of local hire would be appreciated. I'd like that to be a consideration, not a requirement, but I'd like to put voice to that. I would like to have at least weekly photos as the project goes on so that we have a visual record of what happened for future evaluation as needed. I talked about wanting to test for all contaminants. I talked about preserving samples. I want baseline samples for the creek and the ocean and then future testing for that. And a lot of these, probably not everybody agrees with, but that's, that's where I am. Seasonally appropriate work is something I would like to consider, like in heavy, times of heavy rain, it's a consideration. And I think we need to figure out what do we want to do about that. And definitely, I would like to know where every, all, anything that's imported would come from. I'm not suggesting that I'm in favor of it, but I want to know where it came from and I want to test it before I get here. It's been indicated to me that that would be done, that it would be third-party, independent, neutral testing. So that was all I had room for on this page.
That was all you had? I think Commissioner Wright just wrote the conditions of approval, so check. I, again, so I think that, I think that part of why I wanted you to keep going on that, Commissioner Wright, is because I think those are really helpful for as we're preparing resolutions. You know, again, I think that we don't have, like, we, we're in the micro, but I think that the macro is really a question mark. So, you know, we talked about, like, the things on my list are AB 52, the Coastal Commission's assertion of a shell mound, and the chair of the tribe's assertion of a mid-end, which I'm not sure if they're the same but are similar. I'd like to know more about usability. Again, having talked to other geotechnical engineers, I want to understand why the plan with the foreign import seems less usable for future anything than a, than a balanced option with zero foreign import. I want to know more about the blasting. I, again, the primary question we had at the last meeting was how much fill is required to reclaim the quarry? I don't need an answer on that anymore. That answer is zero. What I do still need an answer on is why, like, why 874 versus zero, right? That's a big question. I don't know what the answer is, but it's important.
Can I add one?
Please.
All point here. Not only do we need clean fill, we need compatible fill. You've got fill that's gravelly, fill that's sandy, fill that has, you know, larger rock and that sort of thing in it. And you can't necessarily just put those up on the hill because, oh, we got to load a clean whatever next to anything else. So...
I, I agree with you.
I don't know enough to really define that, but I know we need to organize the fill into groups at least and make sure the groups that are, are, are used are compatible with each other. And if you want some lower down and others higher up, we need to see that in the plan somewhere and I didn't see that yet.
Yeah. I, I wholly agree with what Commissioner Godwin just said and that is the core reason why the usability is a question for me with an import plan versus knowing what we're taking from within the quarry. So that's a question. I'd like to see the letter from DMR that Mr. Campbell referred to. I'd like to see analysis of all three past plans and I'd like staff to please provide all possible options for outcomes to the commissioners. So if we do get a application where we want to make modifications, I'd like that to be a possibility. I'd like to have a possibility for approval. I'd like to have it a possibility for denial when we come back to the date certain. Commissioner Ferguson, are you covered?
No. If we're going to go the route of getting more information, yeah, I would like to see a resolution for all possible outcomes. I think that was just a plain miss by staff on this one. As it is, I can't certify this, right? If we can't certify it and there's only a resolution to prove, it feels like we were ill-equipped. But I'll, I'll put in some other things. For example, I, I go back to our previous meeting. We already had one meeting on this. This is another long meeting. There were very specific, pointed questions that I could illustrate from last meeting that were just either glossed over or provided with answers that were wholly insufficient to certify NEIR. But if we're going to look at things that we'd like to see done on this for another meeting, I'd like to see schedules, daily projected schedules, seasonal projected schedules, and like overall project projected schedules. I'd like to see how this pencils out to a four-year plan. I'd like to see what they think about trucks in December versus trucks in July. I'd like to see how that actually works with trucks between the hours of 9:00 and 12:30 when school gets out for the early days and 1:00 and 3:00 when school gets out for the, for most of the kids, how that's going to work with construction opportunities around the area. Because i-if the reality is you've got 160 truck average, but that comes out to some days of zero trucks and some days of 200 trucks, and 75% of those trucks are lined up at the job site at 6:45 in the morning and getting loaded as fast as you possibly can because you're paying money on equipment, that's going to mean hundreds of trucks in there between 7:00 and 9:00 AM. I know because I've... I know because I watch this happen every day, this is how it's going to happen. I asked a pointed question the last time about a deceleration, I'll get into the weeds for a second. I asked a pointed question about a deceleration area. The response provided and assessed by staff was that this has been looked at and they can use the shoulder. It's a ten-foot shoulder, the average end-up, which they've quoted as they're using and is the standard truck for moving this, is a hundred and two inches wide. That shoulder is only ten feet for the last one-hundred-and-eighty-five feet. If you look at the Caltrans Highway Design Manual, the traffic speed's typically about fifty-five on that section of road, maybe not for their trucks coming in, but for our traffic. The deceleration area is four-hundred-and-thirty-five feet. So if you're going to put a truck with eighteen inches of spare space, not including rear mirrors before that necks down, it's, there's a, there's a grade change and there's a guardrail a hundred-and-eighty-five feet from that turn, and you're going to tell me that it's going to jump into that lane and decelerate from fifty-five to zero, a hundred-and-eighty-five feet with potentially a truck right behind it and one already making the turn in front of it, I'm not ready to believe that or certify it. So it has to get specific and answer all these questions in a way that I'm comfortable putting my name on. Other things I'd like to see is a, I don't know how we can do this, if we can do this, but the requirement of a performance bond. My fear is that it's possible this property was bought with the goal of getting all this for-profit fill and not completing this project. Or maybe it becomes all of a sudden economically unviable when the end of the project is, oh, now we've got to come back now that we've put dirt over all of this, these species and all of this usable area, and now that we've, we've received all the money for infill, now that it's time to put, you know, geofabric and reseed and put back native things and reclaim the habitat that we've talked about, oh, now we're out of business. So I'd like to see a performance bond so that if that is the case, there's money in place for someone else to come in and finish this project, including an independent assessment of what the costs environmentally could be if the project was abandoned in the middle. So you've got a giant hillside of just dirt fill that now has no plan and we have to go out and procure public bids to someone to finish this project for them. I think that would have, be significant cost to the taxpayer. You've seen that exact thing happen on several project sites in Northern Pacifica, people not mitigating the seawall issues with apartment buildings. I don't want to see us holding the bag again. So I'd like to see a plan in advance for that. And I think the schedule dovetails into that, too. Like, I'd like, I'd like to understand, are you doing these wetland mitigation upfront? Are you waiting until all of the for-profit parts of this endeavor are done and then we're, we take it in good faith that all of the important environmental mitigation is done at the very end? I'd also like to see some study, look at the end uses versus interim uses. It seems like this entire E I R is based on the completed project, but I didn't see a lot of explicit detail on what happens in the interim when this is just a construction site for four or six years. Certainly that has a lot of impact to the existing cultural, natural resources. For example, all the wildlife that lives in this area that's going to get several hundred trucks a year. I didn't see a lot of detail showing the, sort of the impact of those species during construction so much as it was after construction. I agree that the project they've presented in the long term probably provides a better, more healthy, robust ecosystem if it all goes well and everything is perfect, but I didn't see a lot of, you know, if this construction project pushes, which most of them do these days, and you have an eight-year open reverse pit mine, what does that mean for all the cultural resources and environmental resources that are there?
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. I think we have two commissioners left, unless you have anything else, Commissioner Godwin, for your list?
I've just got one point.
Okay, go ahead.
She, she has her hand raised, too, just to see.
She has one of mine left, but Vice Chair Liel shook his head.
And anyways, in addition to the performance bond, there is a discussion in this packet of, of drainage in order to make all this fill and cuts and all these things economically viable for the, or I guess actually geotechnically viable for the long run. There's a drainage subsystem that's being put in, and those things aren't free and they don't last infinitely long. So we need financing support, or at least an understanding of what bond would happen if this project would stop partway through. And we've got a partially installed or not installed drainage system, and the whole project depends on having it installed and maintained, how that's going to be done without charging everyone who lives in the city a fee.
Got it. Like, so, so not just the completion bond that.
Yeah, there needs to be.
That Commissioner Ferguson was talking about, but an operation and maintenance long-term.
An operation and maintenance bond.
Plan with bonds for the stormwater.
Drainage completion, so if the thing's abandoned for a couple of years in the mid-project, we get enough drain pipes put in that we don't turn it into this big erosion.
Okay.
Contamination problem.
That's a, that's a good one, too. Commissioner Berman, and then let's go to staff for what date we would like to go to.
Thank you. The ones that I want to add, I want to reiterate my comment on truck trips and times and how that'll impact the amount of trips per day. Commissioner Ferguson touched on this, but the interim, so specifically traffic control, but with relative to pedestrians, the Calera Creek Trail is heavily used, not only for recreation, but for people to literally commute from one side of Pacifica to the other. So I want to know how that pedestrian access is going to be maintained during construction. So how is it, is the pack going to be temporarily installed so people can access through the quarry the way they do today? Commissioner Liel mentioned questions on where staging will occur during construction, just parking of the trucks, both the haul trucks and just contractors coming to the site to work. Where is that parking going to occur? Because, yeah. Lastly, I'd like to request that the commission and the public and staff has more time between the release of the agenda and our public hearing. It was mentioned two weeks of time. I think having two weekends, for those of us who work during the week, having two weekends to review would be sufficient in my mind, but open to other suggestions.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Mr., Director Murdock, that kind of brings us back to you. I think we want to be thoughtful. We also want to be expeditious, and I'd like to understand what your thoughts are on how to accomplish that.
Sure. Thank you, Chair. Long list of information. The applicant and staff will have a lot of work to coordinate following tonight's hearing. We do, I think, want to set this up to make progress in a timely way. And I think in consideration of some of the applicable requirements and SMARA and other factors, we should probably look at a May sixth Planning Commission meeting date and see how far we're able to get on this list of, of information that the Planning Commission's seeking.
Okay. Does anyone have a motion for a continuance?
Well, no, I have a question, though. So if, if we're going to have the meeting on May sixth, does that mean we're going to get our packet when? Are you committing to give us the packet on May sixth and then we'll have the meeting two weeks later?
May, May sixth is the date of the, the meeting. So I think, let's, let's talk about this for a second. Like, sorry, it's really late, I'm tired, I'm trying to like make coherent sentences that are nice. You know, I feel like the control of this is with the applicant. The applicant has the power to give thoughtful, organized information to staff so that we can have a thoughtful, organized meeting. And so I would also love to have more time, but I think a lot of that is going to depend on what you get. So I don't know what planning staff's thought is on when we could get a packet out, but there are a lot of big things happening in the city. I also don't want to read twenty-six-hundred pages again in three days because, ouch. But like, there has to be a happy medium that works for everyone, so I defer to you, Director Murdock.
We will do what we can. As I noted in response to Commissioner Ferguson's question at the outset of tonight's meeting, I cannot commit to publishing an agenda packet two weeks in advance, given our staffing and the various demands of major projects on the Planning Department at this time. We will release the information as early as we're able. You know, that in part depends on things within our control, the staff, and factors outside of staff's control. This is important to the commission and to the community, I recognize that, but there are a lot of important things that we're working on right now that are taking significant amounts of staff time.
Yeah, and we don't, we don't want to break, we don't want to break the other things that are in motion. I think in that vein, yeah, Commissioner Godwin, I'll, I'll turn over to you for a second, but in that, in that vein, I do think what would be helpful is providing the new information as like a separate thing and not having another seven-hundred page or nine, you know, like if it grows, that doesn't help either. So having a separate synthesized piece of information.
Well, I mean, we can think about ways to make it as efficient as possible, but we are bound by a process and laws and needing information in the record, you know, depending on the various ways that this process can go subsequent to a planning commission action. And so there are only so many ways we can, you know, shave this down to be thinner and more efficient at the end of the day, but we will consider what those options may be.
And one, one thing that I will add as well is that certainly a lot of the information will be information that you already reviewed for this meeting. So, you know, the pages that you're talking about will be, you know, similar, although we will need to include them, cross-referencing them, they are part of the record, they will be things you've already reviewed.
And just, you know, as we're talking about ways to be efficient, you know, we've also been asked to prepare two sets of documents, right, that have findings for various actions this, the planning commission could take. So there is the potential for more information rather than less based on, you know, the direction the commission's given us tonight. So we can only do so much within the confines of the process and the direction that's been given.
Through the chair, sorry, Samantha, on that note, is it possible to set up the agenda, the forthcoming agenda packet, where new information, or it's almost like a track changes, because I'm not going to know if I already read something until I actually read it again. So is it possible to not reattach things that are unchanged and, or maybe put it in a separate appendix and then only include the documents that have been updated, then we very clearly know, okay, I've already reviewed that, I don't need to reread it?
Yeah, I can.
You know, I think we can, we can.
Most editing programs have a highlighting capability that indicates when you do a change to a document, it might help you to identify the new sections even if you're going to reuse a big chunks of the document format. And my other question that I was trying to get to is the five-sixth meeting, the study session we referred to earlier, or is that a decision-making meeting?
The, the June fifth meeting was the meeting last year.
No, 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 I'm talking about the future one, on, on the sixth of May.
No, that is, that is the meeting.
That is the decision-making meeting.
I mean, we won't be forced, like, yeah.
Drop the study session or?
There's no, there can be no study session per the city attorney. We've already, we're too far along for that.
Okay.
Just, just to be clear, I do have a concern that if we don't get the packet sufficiently early, that we'll just be sitting here talking about a continuance again, and I don't want to do that.
I hear you. I have faith in us as a commission and as a city. We have to understand that staff has like a hundred things. I, I'm like, I, I hear everybody.
I have a ton of sympathy for staff. Ton of sympathy, because I know what it is that they're dealing with, because I read it all.
Yeah.
So I'm not trying to.
No, I, I know, I know.
shade on them.
I know.
I'm just trying to make sure that we don't end up in the same place again. And what's the best way to do that? Is that, is that, would we be better off waiting a couple more weeks to make sure that we have that time?
I think we want to stick with May sixth. I think we want to stick with May sixth and let's see what we get from the applicant. Okay.
I have a procedural question, because it's never happened in my tenure. If there's a motion for approval and it doesn't receive the required number of votes, what, what happens then?
If there's a motion for approval with, without the required votes, that motion fails, and then typically there would be an alternate motion that comes after that. If there's, if there's no motion that receives the required number of votes, then that's effectively no action, it's an effective denial.
Okay. Does anyone have a motion for the continuance?
Before we do that, one more question. One of the analysis I would love staff to do is what happens if we say no as part of their analysis to all the possible things that they're submitting to us? Just to add another.
Would you like to make the motion, since you're talking?
Oh, oh, Vice Chair Liel's last meeting, we're going to let him make the motion.
I'll make a motion to continue this public hearing to a date certain of May sixth.
Okay.
Second.
Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Sure, yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Chair Hauser.
Yes.
Vice Chair Liel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously.
I want to thank everyone again for all the time that was spent on this, staff, community, applicant, thank you. Okay. Moving on to commission communications, I would love to start, if that's okay, not that I've been not talking this meeting, but I would love to start by saying, as this is Vice Chair Liel's last meeting, and I have had the pleasure of serving my whole tenure on every committee in Pacifica that I've served on with him, that it's been an absolute privilege to be on commissions and committees with you. You are an amazing chair of the E D C, you're an amazing vice chair, and thanks for a lot of work.
Here, here.
Agreed. I am concerned about the loss of the institutional knowledge. You are going to be missed.
All right. Any other communications?
I'd just like to thank you all. It's been a pleasure serving on this Planning Commission. After eight years of serving on city committees and commissions, I don't know what I'll do with my spare time, but, but yeah, I'll definitely see you guys at these meetings. I'm not one to shy away from public comment, and, and yeah, who knows, maybe I'll be back. Thank you all.
You, Vice Chair Liel.
And thank you, city staff as well. Director Murdock, it's been a pleasure working with you, as well as the rest of the city staff, so I won't be a stranger.
Thank you, Commissioner Liel, it's been a pleasure.
Do we have any staff communication?
Thank you, Chair. Just again, sincere thanks on behalf of the city staff, the time and dedication and sacrifice it takes to serve on any commissioner committee, but particularly a commission like the Planning Commission that meets twice a month, has extensive agenda packets, the need to come prepared and to engage effectively is great, and I feel like you've always done that and, you know, supported your fellow commissioners in the community with really well-reasoned and open-minded and fair and balanced input in our processes, and so thank you very much for that.
Do we have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
I'm going to second it. Oh, stole it, okay. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Chair Hauser.
Yes.
Vice Chair Liel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody. Meeting is adjourned.